Meeting of Monday, October the 21st back to order. Kathy, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's cold.
Good evening, everyone. Chief, are we kicking it off with you this evening?
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of council. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this awards recognition tonight as part of the council meeting. And I also like to thank the city manager for recommending that we take the time to recognize these individuals this evening. So I am honored to be before you this evening to recognize awards presented to two of our Dublin police officers and two heroic members of the Dublin community. I'd ask that Curtis and Mildred Kemp, if you could please join me up front along with Officer Quintanilla and Officer Whitaker. You can stand right?
Yep.
Actually, if you want to face council, so they can see who you are. So for Mr. and Mrs. Kemp, on July 30th, Dublin Police and Washington Township Fire responded to a report of an accidental electrocution on Edinburgh Road. Two painters had inadvertently moved their 30-foot metal ladder into a power line and were unfortunately shocked and severely injured. Curtis and Mildred Kemp were inside their home when they witnessed the accident occur. Without hesitation, Mr. and Mrs. Kemp rushed outside to assist the unconscious victims as the ladder was still in contact with the power lines. Mr. and Mrs. Kemp bravely entered a dangerous situation to move the victim to safety and started administering critical first aid until our officers and Washington Township medics arrived on scene. Their heroic actions assisting two complete strangers undoubtedly contributed to both victims' survival. At a ceremony held at the Dublin Justice Center earlier this month, I was honored to present Mr. and Mrs. Kemp with the Dublin Police Department's Chief's Award of Excellence. In recognition and appreciation of their decisive and selfless actions, it is my pleasure to introduce these two extraordinary members of our community. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Curtis and Mildred Kemp. For Officer Rigo Berto Quintanilla and Officer Gwen Whitaker, as Mr. and Mrs. Kemp were delivering CPR, Officer Rigo, Quintanilla, and Gwen Whitaker were first responders to arrive on the scene of the electrocution. Both officers performed remarkably, quickly assessing the scene and rushing to the victim's aid. Officer Quintanilla and Officer Whitaker took over administering CPR to the victims, quickly determining that one of the victims did not have a pulse. Officer Quintanilla delivered an electrical charge through an automated external defibrillator and continued CPR until EMS arrived. Both victims were transported to the hospital in critical condition. Fortunately, both individuals survived the injuries sustained in the event. Officer Quintanilla and Officer Whitaker demonstrated tremendous situational awareness, poise, and courage by entering a dangerous situation and providing critical assistance to the injured victims. At the same ceremony held at the Dublin Justice Center earlier this month, I had the privilege of presenting Officer Quintanilla and Officer Whitaker with the Dublin Police Department's Life Saving Award. Please join me in congratulating Officer Rigo Berto Quintanilla and Officer Gwen Whitaker. I'd just like to say on behalf of the four individuals standing up here, tonight really epitomizes the mission statement of our police department and highlights the exceptional character of the members of our community. Public safety is our business, but we know that we are not able to do that without the members of the community assisting us in being able to continue to provide public safety to the entire community. These four individuals are truly lifesavers and heroes, and we are so proud to have them before you here today to recognize their efforts. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Yeah, even just as if on cue, Chief, the heavens have opened up and thanked -- what an extraordinary story. Thanks, Chief, for bringing that to our attention, and thanks to all of them. It is really an extraordinary story, and it shows the quality of people that live in this community and the quality of people that work in this community with your police officers, and we greatly appreciate that. So thank you very much for bringing it in. Marty Taylor, President and CEO of 115. Where is Marty?
I thought Nancy had got in contact with you that said Verily could not be here.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that speeds us through that part of the agenda. Scott Drang, welcome, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. There you go. Thank you for the opportunity. If I may, Mayor, I'd like to also introduce our Board President, Dr. David Lee from Ohio Health. He's here. And then your two councilrats, Betty Clark and Frank Wilson, that are both here as well.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it very much.
A real quick update on the industry, hotel industry in particular this year. Our occupancy rates are about 1% or 2% up versus last year. The average daily rate's about the same, so you'll see bed tax up a little bit as well. The one thing, I think last time we were here, we talked about the Crown Plaza closing for 18 months, almost two years. What we didn't know then that we know now is they're actually eliminating all the meeting space at the Crown Plaza. So it's going to be a reduction.
Forever?
Yeah. So it's going to be a reduction of about 32% of our hotel meeting space in the market is going to be gone. So we're doing a lot of research. We're on top of it. We're trying to see what kind of effect or effect it does or doesn't have on our market or ability to bring people in. And we're in the middle of that right now, so we'll be back with you with our results of that and see exactly where we land. They closed November 15th, and it's going to open as a DoubleTree in about 18 months without the meeting space. So we'll see how that goes.
Wow.
Keep updated on that. I did want to quickly talk a little bit about the results we had over the last year. As you know, Council provides the Bureau an extra 10% of bed tax annually in addition to our mandated 25%. And what I'd like through the next five minutes is just focus on that 10%, on the results and the ROI generated just from that additional bed tax generated this year, meeting space or securing meeting business, the regional campaign that we did, and again, raising the profile of the city across the nation as well. The new meeting business is pretty cut and dry. You know, we were able, with additional monies, we were able to hire a senior level, Pat King. Actually, Dave, wait, Dave. Dave is her husband, so you'll hear from her in a little bit. But anyway, Pat's done a tremendous job, generating over 4,000 room nights just this year so far, 41 new conferences, over $1 million in total revenue, and over $1.9 million in new leads. And this is real numbers. There's no multipliers here. This is a real hotel dollars and cents that we're able to track. I mean, you've heard me say before, the trickle-down effect is immense. These people have to eat someplace, shop someplace. That's not factored in this equation at all. So that's the meeting stuff. Several months ago, we also came to you with results of our campaign, the Right Here campaign, with the Place DNA research we did. We showed you the research of that several months ago. One of the deliverables of that was creating a new campaign for the regional and statewide markets to promote and sell to the city of Dublin. One thing that really came out clear with the city was, of this research, was how engaged our Dublin residents are, how proud they are of the city, how welcoming they are to visitors. And we took that kind of tagline, the Right Here in Dublin, to kind of use as a focal point of the campaign. This kind of shows you where we're actually promoting Dublin. These are the regional markets. Historically, the last three or four years, we've been in Detroit, Pittsburgh, West Virginia, Huntington, Charleston, Lexington, and Indianapolis. This year, for the first time, we were able to expand that market to a six-hour drive to Philadelphia, Chicago, and Louisville as well for the first time. So that's where those went. I'm going to show you a couple quick creative aspects. Again, these are mainly social campaigns through Instagram, Facebook, et cetera, really family-oriented here, promoting all the great things we have in historic Dublin. Millennials, that's another key area that we focus on with Vassal and downtown Dublin as a whole, the zoo being a tremendous asset and attracting families. And of course, you know, everyone loves food, and we have a tremendous food product here in the city of Dublin. We also created numerous commercials that we used on YouTube and such. I'm going to show you two. They're 20 seconds long. They're real quick. One is obviously geared more toward the millennials, and the second one's geared more toward families. We're working on a fall version, several videos. We're actually shooting this week to show the fall and the shoulder seasons. We'll do winter as well to kind of show the entire year of what the great product we have here in the city of Dublin. So let's get to the results real quick of those campaigns. Obviously, impressions are a big thing that we do. Almost 9 million impressions were generated as a result of that campaign in those six markets that we talked about, 28% increase over last year. One thing that's interesting, if you look at this bar chart, you know, obviously, to kind of do the shotgun approach of doing 2016, 18, 19, it won't be as effective. So to do it on a consistent basis, which you allow us to do, just makes the campaign that much more effective as well. And again, we trial and error things. We know it works now after several years as well. Bed tax, another huge metric that we use. Remember, this campaign was May through September of this year. The campaign generated almost $1.8 million of bed tax revenue. That's the highest five-month total in the 31-year history of the 31 years of Dublin bed tax as a whole. So the campaign worked. It was actually a 20% increase over the same period last year as well. So it's a huge metric that we use. This is an interesting one. We track on a monthly basis where people are accessing our website from, what cities are coming from. We do this on a monthly basis. For the first time, Chicago popped up. So that's a direct correlation with our efforts in that market in particular and the people we're actually reaching and they're accessing information to the city from the city of Chicago. Kind of another interesting point is every month, Dublin and Columbus are pretty much one and two, and I think that just shows that, you know, we've said we're much more than just heads in beds, that local residents in Columbus area are using us as a resource for restaurants they want to go to, hotels, shops, events, et cetera, as well. And one little tidbit is people accessing our website, 77% accessed it through their mobile phone, which is interesting. Five years ago, it was only 23% access through mobile phones. So if you don't have a mobile-friendly website, you've kind of missed the boat over the last couple of years. It's critically important to do. Raising Dublin's profile, the last kind of deliverable we wanted to give to all you guys, again, that is the part of getting media across the nation, earned media, we call it, free media. Almost 18 million impressions generated as well. These are some of the national hits on USA Today, Travel Pulse, Reader's Digest. Regionally, it's very strategic on where we're going after. You can see we've had, you know, hits in regional markets like Chicago, Charleston, Milwaukee, Cincinnati as well. So it's very, coincides with our paid campaign as well to make sure they kind of feed off each other. The broadcast is always fun to show, all of you. I know if you remember back in the spring, we had a one-hour feature in Cleveland, Fox, on the city of Dublin that was very well received. We've been to Kentucky, we've been to Dayton, Cincinnati, several of these areas, just routing and touting the city of Dublin. So what does all this mean? Is my clicker, Chris Haywire. There's your ROI on this, and it's very conservative. You know, this past year, that additional 10% equated about $360,000. We turned that into $5.8 million, and that's very conservative. There's no trickle-down effect here. Every dollar you invested, you got 16 back for the city of Dublin. So it's something that we're excited about and something we'll continue to track and do as well. I did also want to talk a little bit about the accreditation. We were just reaccredited above and beyond these campaigns. We're only 1% of CVBs worldwide that are accredited by our national organization. We really like this because we're gauged and judged by the same standards that Las Vegas, Orlando, New York City, $100 million bureaus are. We have to meet the same qualifications. So that's something that kind of says we're doing things right on our perspective. Again, real quick, just organization, I thought this was important, so you guys know that we're accountable to our board, all of you. These are our metrics that we meet on a daily basis. Everything we do, every tactic we do at the Bureau has to fit under one of these buckets of organizational metrics. These are stretch goals. We've never once hit all nine at one time, so we'll continue to strive to do that as well. And to just kind of finish up, you know, if you think about it, it all really does start with a visit. You know, if you know potential, families are looking to live someplace, and they're looking at different cities, they come to Dublin for the first time, visit it, see what a great town is, they move here. Businesses, economic development, startup businesses, current businesses, the first time they come here is to a visit, they're welcomed, they see what a great community is, and they can build their business as well. So we've always said that tourism is the first aid of economic development, and we were can and handled Dana and his team with that as well. Also, I'd kind of like to finish up that, you know, with the product we have, you know, our job is made a lot easier because of all the stuff you guys do to make this such a desirable city to visit and live in and have business in. You know, if a product sucks, there's nothing we can do. There's no magic wand that I can throw over in terms of marketing tactics and everything else. People will see it, consumers will see right through it. So all of your assistants, work in the past, your predecessors, Dana's team, his predecessors, chiefs making this community such a safe community to live and visit, just makes our job that much easier to attract visitors here as well. And lastly, you know, we track what people are saying about Dublin on a daily basis. TripAdvisor is one of those. 98% of comments are positive. These are just a couple from random visitors across the world. This one's about Dublin Village Tavern. If you're in Dublin, this is a must. We love everything in the menu, such a great food and atmosphere. This, Chief Leather Lips, super easy to find. It's a really neat statue that offers a lot of photo ops and has a cool story. And then Indian Run Falls, this is our first visit to Dublin. We loved it, just a few blocks from historic Dublin. This wooded area is stepping into another world. So again, you know, we appreciate all your support through the year, and we'll continue to show you the ROI and make sure your investment is spent well and continue to kind of give you backup on that. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Scott. How long have you been with the Bureau?
19 years.
19 years. You do an extraordinary job. And what is amazing about not only what you produce, but periodically, you come in and you actually document and prove the results of what it is you are producing. And it is really, it's very, it's very easy to be supportive of you and your board and what you guys do because it's such an obvious wise investment. And, you know, this is a great community, and I'm allowed to say that it's just better in Dublin, and that's true, but your marketing skills and the hard work that you and the board do are really second to none. So thank you very much for everything that you do for this community. Does anybody have a question for Scott, Kathy, or Jane?
Just, well, it is a question, I guess. Scott, you're the first one to see people coming in here, and you're saying that we're going to be losing some conference space. So obviously, that's something that we need to try to figure out how to fill that void.
Right.
That's an important piece. Besides conference, meeting space, trade show space, is that important?
Yeah, I think that's the space, you know, just the meeting space in general. I mean, the max we can really hold is about 250 people in terms of the size of a trade show coming in here. By no means our hotel, I mean, our hotel occupancy is about 65, 66%, so it's not like we're 100% occupied. So there's definitely an opportunity to bring in those, Monday through Thursday kind of business as well. So, you know, I'm not sure if it's a hotel. Our research kind of flushed all that out. I mean, are we looking for a full-service hotel? Are we looking for more meeting space? Do we need a larger exchange? You know, that kind of thing, we'll have to all figure out. But I can tell you, the Embassy and Marriott Northwest, who are now the two, they're doing cartwheels, but the Crown's not around.
I bet they are. Yeah. I would just say that because you know where the voids and the gaps are, because you're hearing it from the people, that you pass that, definitely pass that on to us in economic development, which I know that you do all the time. But it's important for us to know, you know, what it is that we need to be concentrating on to continue to raise this return on investment, which is fabulous.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The Right Here campaign?
Yep.
That's terrific. Was Agency come up with that?
Yeah, Destination Thank is, as Agency did. Many of you attended their Place DNA. They were here back in February, I believe. They're an international agency. They have clients, they have Bermuda, Vancouver, all over the world. So we're part of their list, and they do a fantastic, they're very cutting-edge, very unique, and they really took, they were here for weeks, kind of, you know, soaking everything up about our community, and then, you know, it's a campaign that'll last a couple of years, for sure.
Yeah, I think it's fabulous.
Thank you.
Will you do that again periodically then? That was, that was one of the better, you know, I go to a lot of those sorts of things. That one was really exceptionally well done.
Yeah, they did a good job, absolutely. And we have to get, have the pulse of the community, and it changes rapidly, for sure. So we'll definitely do that every couple of years.
Anybody else? Fantastic. Thank you very much, Scott. Really appreciate, thank you for coming in. We appreciate everything you do. I'm going to ask Kip Witche to come up to the microphone. He's the coordinator of athletics for Dublin City Schools. And, you know, over the years, the safety in our schools is a bigger and bigger issue as we deal with things across the country that we've had to deal with. We have a proclamation, Kip, that I'd like you, to present to you and then get your comments on the issue. So whereas October 21st through 27th, 2019, has been proclaimed America's Safe Schools Week by the National School Safety Center in an effort to make our country's schools safe, secure, and productive, and whereas the NSSC was established by President Ronald Reagan in 1984 as a joint program between the United States Departments of Education and Justice, and now operates as an independent nonprofit organization serving schools and communities, and whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens, and whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings, and the city of Dublin is extremely proud of the excellent public education safeguards provided by Dublin City Schools, and where it is the responsibility of all citizens to enhance the learning experience of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promote good citizenship, and generally make schools safe and secure, now therefore I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of all of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim October 21st through 27th, 2019 as Safe Schools Week in the city of Dublin, and promote the efforts to provide all of our nation's schools with positive and safe learning environments. Sign this 21st day of October, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
On behalf of Dr. Hoadley, our school board, and our staff and students, I'd like to thank City Council for the proclamation, but also, more importantly, the great relationship
we've had between the school district and city for years. I've been with the school district for 33 years now, and it's been phenomenal as far as how that just seems, the relationship and the working together seems to just get better every year. And there are a few people to my left in uniforms that I would like specifically like to thank.
And they also have guns, Kip, so.
I know. I'll be nice.
Better introduce them.
But Sergeant Rice, would you like to introduce everyone?
I just wanted to recognize our school resource officers, a couple of them that are here, Officer Rigo Quintanilla, who's at Davis Middle School, Officer Kathy Evans, who is at Carr Middle School, and also Corporal Bill Morris, who's in charge of our school resource officers, as well as the other officers that couldn't be here. Thanks, Kip.
They play a tremendous role in the school, not only just for law enforcement purposes, but they become members of our staff. And the thing is, and the kids know them and really enjoy their presence in the building. We really appreciate that. Real quickly, a couple of other groups I would want to recognize. First is our ACT group, which is Adolescents and Community Together Coalition. And what they do, it's more driven by students, but it's students and adults working together to help prevent youth substance misuse. Also, I've got three representatives tonight from the Sandy Hook Promise Group, and they are involved with trying to reduce violence in the community, violence in our schools. And tonight, our student representative, Bella Turk, and our parent organizer, Sarah Guster, and Shannon Gallagher. And they have been very supportive in trying to reduce isolation through their Start With Hello program, just trying to get kids to feel more like they belong in our schools. And more geared towards the high school, middle school kids, just basically through social media, they have students that find others out there that just work off that, the idea of you hear something, say something. And that's made, they've made a tremendous difference in the state of Ohio, the groups throughout the state of Ohio in preventing school shootings and suicides and bullying. So I'd like to thank all of our groups tonight and all the support they have. And again, thank you for your support, too. Thank you.
Fantastic. I figured I was, right in the background. I understand. You know what, Kip? There are so many different ways that the relationship between our schools and the city benefit everybody in this community, and there is not a more important way than our relationship between our police officers and your school system. And you're right, we've all up here, and all of us have kids that have come through the Dublin City Schools. And I guarantee, at our kitchen tables, we have all talked about a school resource officer at one point or another. They know these kids. They are doing some of the most important patrolling and police work and support and service to these kids in these schools. And it is just extraordinary that our kids come up in a system where a police officer is someone you can be trusting of and go talk to when you see something that makes you uncomfortable. And it is such an unbelievably important relationship. And thank you so much for coming and representing Sandy Hook and the things that our world now has to deal with that we didn't, maybe not too terribly long ago. But thank you, Kip, for what you do. And Chief, thanks for letting your folks in the schools. And please pass along to Dr. Hoadley how much we appreciate the partnership with him on that front. It's extraordinarily important.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we move on to the citizen comments portion of the agenda. I don't have anybody that's signed in, but if anybody in the room wants to raise their hand and come up and talk for five minutes, we'll listen to you. I don't see any hands on the postponed tabled items review of the city's general fund balance policy. Matthew?
Good evening, Council. During the last council meeting, there was a significant amount of discussion regarding what this policy requires the Director of Finance will do and what City Council may do with regard to Section 7. Operationally, the current language requires that the Director of Finance will include this transfer amount in a supplemental appropriation the following year, and that City Council may decide to approve or not approve that transfer. Staff believes that the appropriate decision-making body for this transfer is in fact City Council and not the Director of Finance, so we support the current language.
It was kind of a legalistic discussion we have between may and shall and will and all of this stuff. So everybody over there is comfortable with the language. Does anybody have any questions? Kathy?
The only comment that I would make, when I read the memo that it will come back as a supplemental appropriation, that made perfect sense. I think that clarified it. Should that language be actually in there? Because it's not. It doesn't really necessarily say that.
There's really no other way to operationalize it, and the policy should speak to the policy goal, and then the way we implement it should be the best, best practice at that time. Currently, it's a supplemental. If that should change in the future to meet the policy goal, we should have the flexibility to kind of work through that, I think.
So what would that change to in the future? What do you mean?
I don't know what it would look like in the future, but this is the way it's operationalized currently, and it meets the policy goal.
Yeah, I mean, that cleared it up for me when we said that, but that was not clear in the way the policy said it would just occur. So I think that was helpful to me. So I'm fine with it, with that clarification. I don't know how you could make the language clearer on that, but that makes sense because then it really is a, it really is a council decision and not a finance director decision. So.
Anything else? Hearing no other comments, I make a motion that we reaffirm the general fund balance policy adopted by Council on 9/12/16. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing.
Excuse me, Mayor. Yep, sorry, if I may. Just want to check with the clerk. There were no consent minutes that needed to be approved tonight?
There wasn't anything on the agenda, so I just.
We have in our packet, October 7th, but not on the agenda.
Right, because they weren't added to the packet. We didn't have any.
So we're good?
Yep.
Okay. Ordinance 48-19, Jenny?
Establishing the location and amount of cash on hand for change funds.
Matt?
There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance.
Any questions from Council? Hearing none, Jenny?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?[1765.33]
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive council rules to address ordinances 49-19, 50-19, 51-19, and 52-19 together. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina. Jenny?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
If you could read all that, we'll sit here and listen to you for a little bit.
Okay. Ordinance 49-19, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents and to accept conveyance of a 0.081 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation to existing access rights from Gregory Brown from the property located at 4321 Bright Road for the public purpose of constructing a new cul-de-sac, constructing sanitary sewer lines, water line extensions, and a shared-use path. 50-19, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.074 acre, more or less perpetual public utility easement from Daniel Trubisky and Susan L. Trubisky, located at 7130 Grandy Cliffs Drive, for the public purpose of constructing a new cul-de-sac, constructing sanitary sewer lines and water line extensions. Ordinance 51-19, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.034 acre, more or less perpetual public utility easement from Sandra H. Taylor, trustee located at 7143 Grandy Cliffs Drive, for the public purpose of constructing a new cul-de-sac, constructing sanitary sewer lines and water line extensions. And 52-19, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.035 acre, more or less perpetual public utility easement from Brian Selick, located at 7129 Grandy Cliffs Drive, for the public purpose of constructing a new cul-de-sac, constructing sanitary sewer lines and water line extensions.
Thank you. Outstanding job. Paul?
Council staff has no additional information to present beyond that provided at the first reading. Staff does recommend adoption of these four ordinances and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council? Chris? None?
Nope. Had mine last time.
Nobody? Jenny?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ordinance 53-19, Jenny?
Rezoning approximately 33.9 acres, south of US 33, east of Idar Menroan, and north of Shire Rings Road from ID 1 Research Office District, PUD, Planned Unit Development District, the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center, for the construction of up to 550,000 square feet of ambulatory medical care, medical and office uses, as well as potential future hospital in two phases.
Excuse me. I'm going to need to step out.
Oh, yeah. She has to recuse herself. And I will just point out for the record, I didn't mention this, we've moved into the ordinances, and this is the first reading on this ordinance. There will be a second reading at the November 4th council meeting. Christina needs to step out. I will introduce this legislation. Claudia?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This ordinance before you tonight is, as Ms. Delgado read into the record, a rezoning request for approximately 34 acres of vacant land that is owned by the city of Dublin and was authorized in an economic development agreement earlier this year to be conveyed to the university for the purpose of the Wexner Medical Center to build a facility here in two phases. Outlined in yellow is the site. As you can see, as I mentioned, it is vacant. There are, there is a ditch going through the southern portion of the site, and I have another photo that shows that a little bit better. It is south of 33 and north of Shire Rings Road. I can mention, here's another view of the site as part of this application and with the future application that is scheduled for November the 4th, for the plat that would establish rights of way for roadway through, that serves the site from the east to the west, and also creates five parcels. The ditch will be relocated to the south. This is a map of the community plan, future land use map. And as you remember, in 2017, City Council approved updates to the West Innovation District and created with that new future land use categories. And this particular site would be in the research and development area there in the orange color. And one of the things that has not yet been caught up is the rezoning for the West Innovation District to actually create these zoning districts. So they are future land use districts currently in the community plan, but the zoning has not yet caught up to that. So what we have in front of us is the ID 1 district that the site is encompassing, which allows office, medical, hospital, conference center, and research and development uses. We've had discussions with the applicant early on as to what the most appropriate zoning category would be, as I mentioned, since we do not yet have the West Innovation Districts in place. So with that, the applicant is proposing a rezoning to the Planned Unit Development District and therefore writing their own zoning regulations that would be specific and applicable to this particular site outlined in yellow. The applicant in their development text has modeled that district very similarly to what is in the code currently for the ID district, but obviously tailored to their needs and their particular facility. And their team is here tonight as well to speak more to the programming and what the vision is for, for the use in the near and in the long-term future. As I had mentioned, there are two phases proposed. Phase one would be a medical office building and an ambulatory care facility, and that approximately would encompass 250,000 square feet of development. On the southern portion of the, of the site is what we now refer to as University Boulevard, which is that roadway that will be established from Shire Rings up toward Idar Men to serve this site. And it will, in the future, also be adjacent to Ohio University to the very north of the West Innovation District. The applicant is proposing a full-service access point in the center of the site to the south, and then two access points either to the west and to the east that are minor in nature, but will also provide additional access and through movements through the site. And then the applicant is also establishing access to parcels to the east and to the west in the future. And then phase two can accommodate a hospital here that could ultimately be up to 300,000 square feet for the full build-out of that site. As you can see, there are three retention basins proposed to serve stormwater management for the site, as well as parking located throughout, throughout the, the site. One of the things I wanted to mention is that the staff, economic development, as well as engineering and public information, have done a lot of community outreach for this particular proposal, as well as with the roadway relocation. We've had meetings in August, in September, and most recently in October. And we have included all the correspondence received from comment cards in your packet tonight. The ones from October are lagging behind, since that was just last week, but we will have them included in your second reading package, as well as with the plat that is forthcoming here on November the 4th. The applicant has included in their preliminary development plan open space areas to, and that was also something that was discussed in quite a bit of detail at the Planning and Zoning Commission, to provide areas for patients, staff, and visitors to have areas of respite and quiet areas, having an ability to go outside. And as Mrs. Fox will recall, there were also discussions about inviting more of the general public to the site and have walking trails throughout the development. And the applicant has updated some of their plans to show where these paths would be located and where areas of rest could be occurring throughout the site. From an architectural character standpoint, we do have this image, and then the text includes more regulatory language as to what the architectural character is intended to be, very much in line with what the West Innovation District also has set out for a more modern building with a lot of glass and masonry. And then lastly, there are sign locations proposed within the preliminary development plan, as well as graphics that speak to the signs. And the applicant, I'm certain, will address some of these unique needs that a site of this kind of magnitude and of that kind of unique use requires for wayfinding exterior and internally to the site. And here are some of those updated graphics that correspond with the, with the sign plan that indicates the locations. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this application in August as a concept plan, and then September the 19th as a request for recommendation to City Council for the rezoning. There were eight conditions as part of the staff recommendation, and the commission accepted those. The applicant has updated all the text-related conditions, so before you tonight, we would carry only seven and eight forward as those would be addressed at future stages. So with that, we are recommending, as a staff, approval of this ordinance at the second reading, public hearing, which would take place on November the 4th, 2019. And as I said, the applicant is here to answer any questions as a staff. Thank you.
Aaron, you want to? Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. Aaron Underhill with Underhill &amp; Hodge at 8,000 Walton Parkway in New Albany. I'm here with several representatives of the university and our medical center this evening, but we're excited to be here. This is the culmination, I think, of many, many months of hard work, both on your behalf, by the city, its administration, and our team. I think we really rolled up our sleeves in the beginning of this with the economic development agreement and the purchase agreement, trying to make sure that the city was getting what it was bargaining for with its investment here. I think you possibly could not ask for a better use for this site, both from an economic standpoint and from a service standpoint for the community. In a moment, I'm going to have Dan Like with the university's medical center up here to talk a little bit more about the use itself. But this is an ambulatory care outpatient medical center, meant to provide opportunities for physicians' visits, testing procedures, outpatient surgical procedures, with the thought that maybe in the future, we have this as a phase two and a question mark, that it could turn into partially a community hospital down the line. That is not currently in the programming for this facility. We're, we're doing three of these right now throughout central Ohio, but there's a thought in the future that that could become a need and a desire to add on to the facility as a phase two. We are doing these, one is about to come out of the ground in, on Hamilton Road at 161 in Columbus, by the Target that just opened. I'm sure you heard about that. We've also worked on a site in Powell, and that's entitled. And then we're, we're just as excited, if not more so, about this site with its exposure, with all of the good things going on in the area and what Dublin has to offer. Claudia touched on the fact that the underlying zoning does, in fact, allow all of the uses, I believe, that we're proposing here. But when we got down to brass tacks and we started looking at the zoning code, we felt like some of the flexibility we would need with this site warranted going to a PUD, which used to be the norm here. It used to be all we did, but now we haven't, we don't do too many of those here in Dublin anymore. But anyway, as you can imagine, these projects, a project like this is designed from the inside out. And I mentioned this at planning commission. We continue to have the, the project evolve. We feel pretty darn comfortable with the site plan. We feel like the architecture is very representative of where we are right now. We think we're going to turn pretty quickly to filing the final development plan, but all three of these facilities I've mentioned are in the process of being programmed and planned and designed at the same time. So that was another reason why we thought the PUD would be a worthwhile process. We could get some of the things we needed to get ironed out from an entitlements perspective, understanding that we had this process we were undertaking that was going to take a while to get to and get to the level that Dublin would be comfortable with at, at the development plan stage. So again, a great opportunity for, to consolidate some services in Dublin. Dan's going to talk to that. Really put into one building some things that are going on throughout the community now and centralizing them in one place. Also providing a lot of new services and amenities for the community. And so that alone is a good thing, but from an economic development standpoint, you have all the information, but phase one, at least 350 jobs with an average salary of $100,000 apiece. It's hard, you'd be hard pressed to find an office user that would, would do that for you. And so a great story to tell here. We're extremely excited. And with that, I won't belabor those points any longer. I'll have Dan Like with the university's med center get up here and talk about the programming a little bit.
Dan, welcome back.
Thanks, Aaron. Good to see everybody again. Dan Like, 67, 17 Brody Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio. So didn't have to travel too far. Appreciate the opportunity, and Aaron really did a great job kind of summarizing, I think, what you all have heard. And I just wanted to, again, restate and emphasize the phase two part, because I know that's come up in public comment. Do we need another hospital in Dublin? Well, the fact is, we're making a major investment in outpatient care and investing in preventative care in terms of primary care and behavioral health and a lot of, and therapy rehabilitation, screening and diagnostic services, trying to keep people well. And then if they get out of the hospital, have a place for them to have their medical home, so they don't have to come back down to campus or bounce around to different locations. Really, as Aaron stated, really consolidate our services, add other services that we currently don't offer in the community, so it can really provide that convenience and accessibility factor that our patients and, and, and future patients really want and, and, and demand. As Aaron stated, there is multiple facilities in Dublin that we have. Many of, of people here in the room and others in Dublin wouldn't know it because they're not in the, you know, maybe not even well-signed. That's us, not you all. And, and really, and outdated facilities, several of them. A couple of them are leased facilities and some of our ones that are owned and are, we're just out of space. So this allows us to consolidate, this allows us to grow, and we're extremely excited to have this opportunity and would, would welcome any questions that anyone may have.
Fantastic. What's your timeline, Dan? When do you think this starts?
Great question. For this facility, we do have an aggressive schedule. So as Aaron mentioned, the first site that's under construction, started in construction in, in June, was 161 in Hamilton, and we plan to open that in summer of '21. And we want to open this facility the following summer, summer of '22. So that's a very aggressive schedule. And the fact that we spent so much time on programming and really having more of a prototypical ambulatory care center that we want to put in multiple locations and then tailor it to some of the uniqueness of the community and maybe even some of the partnership opportunities that we may develop. But we've, since we spent so much time on the first facility, it really reduces our design schedule tremendously. So our, our design schedule's really condensed. We have our architect, the same architect that we're using at 161 in Hamilton. We just selected Corna &amp; Kokozing to build the Dublin facility, so our general contractor's on board, and, and we're ready to get started. We've, we've really finalizing our program and ready to jump into schematic design.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dan. Questions from council?
I have a couple. First, I really appreciate that you've gone the PUD route on this versus, you know, I think, I think that speaks to some maybe lessons we're learning about area-wide rezonings and, you know, the likelihood of us guessing so far in advance of what is exactly going to happen on every parcel is really difficult in terms of zoning. So thanks for doing that, PUD. I think, I think that will probably expedite your process considerably. But I do have some questions about the conditions. One of them was the removal of the curbs on some of the parking lot islands. I didn't see any indication on the drawings of exactly where those curb removals were going to be. We've had some, we've had some other folks in the city try to eliminate curbs and do bioswales and things of that nature. But I don't know the extent of the curb removal, if it's just enough to let the water into the bioswale, or if it's, if it is in its entirety. Because oftentimes, they get very messy and unsightly if you do them in, in their entirety. So Claudia, can you speak to a little bit about where the curb removals are going to happen?
Yeah. Certainly at this stage in the process, we wouldn't have locations for what that was to take place. What the condition really was intended to speak of is to allow it in the development text, because the code would not typically allow it. So those details, at this point, have not been ironed out.
Well, you know, the condition was on there, if you could put the conditions back up, I think it was five or six spoke to the curb removals. So I, I would not want to support the elimination of curbed islands, but I would like to support areas in the parking lot islands to provide for bioswales. You know, when you're doing, when you're doing snow removal and a lot of other operations, if you don't have any curbs to go up against, it becomes very difficult. So I have a little bit of concern on that one. Help me understand, the smaller trees shown on the plans in the interior landscape areas be permitted on the development text? Why would, why would smaller trees not be permitted? You mean in lieu of shade trees? So. So...
The requirement, or that what the applicant has shown in the plans is a tree that's an inch and three quarters. The code would require it to be two inches. So we, the condition was speaking to reconciling what the plans showed and allowing it in the text.
So it's size and installation, not a different kind of tree?
Correct.
So they're looking at inch and a half caliber trees versus two or two and a half?
Yeah, it's an inch and three quarters, yeah.
Then, item number two, the applicant updated the development text to clarify that the peninsulas may count on the interior landscape requirements. Which peninsulas are you, which peninsulas are we counting? Are they meaningful or are they just auxiliary?
Well, the code requires a certain, would allow you to count a certain square footage. I want to say it's 150 square feet minimum for it to actually count, and it would have to have a tree in it as well.
So these are smaller than 150 square feet?
We wanted to make sure that that's what the intent was behind the peninsula's counting, that it is indeed at 150 square feet.
I guess I'd have to, I'm not sure what, why we would be talking about that in a rezoning, but especially if it were going to a PUD because those things would, those are details likely to be worked out at that stage, but...
Right.
I suppose that's all my questions for now. I think Jane had a couple of questions.
No, you know, I think a lot of this planning and zoning talked a lot about the parking lots and the peninsulas, and what we were trying to do was break up the mass of large parking spaces where people who are going to an ambulatory care center would find themselves walking across large masses of parking. So what we were asking for is ways to divide up the parking lot with some landscape uses that it looked like a walking path through it, so that it didn't look like large masses...
That's why the smaller trees in the county...
I'm not sure if...
Almost like a greenway, then?
Sort of like a greenway, so that you didn't look like, if you were using crutches or you had a boot on your foot, that you had this large asphalt mass to go across. We wanted them to break it up so that when you entered, you felt as if it was comfortable to move from your car to the front of the, to the front of the building with resting spots along the way, if necessary, if that meant benches, that sort of thing. Because so many people do come to these facilities and they're struggling to walk. And so that's, that may be why that, that condition was put in there, but, but that's what we were, that was the intent.
I think I would be totally supportive of, you know, a greenway movement through, from the parking lot into the building. They just need to be big enough to be able to support, sustain some sort of vegetation. When they get really small, the...
Exactly, and that's, that was the intent.
...keep island builds up and you lose the vegetation. My only point is make them big enough so that they're ecosystems and not mud. My last question had to do with, you talked about the 75% lot coverage. Has structured parking been at all contemplated at the time of the addition?
I don't believe you can do that.
Keith Myers, I'm the vice president of Planning, Architecture, and Real Estate at Ohio State, 5134 North High Street. No, structured parking has not been considered as part of this. That was the reason that we have, we went to 34 acres. So this site's bigger than either the other two sites. We have a way of putting structured parking in if we need to, at any reason, for any reason, but our experience has been the parking demands, everything on campus is going down, they're going down, not up. So at the moment, we're not, not contemplating that.
I think our text would allow it, just to leave the option open, but we've, you know, we don't believe that's going to be a reality anytime soon.
It would just be a way for you to build a lot more building if you...
Yeah.
...had the opportunity. I just didn't want to preclude it so that that was available to you when you started designing Phase Two, if you felt like you, the need was there, that, that you had that opportunity, that, you know...
We've done plans with single decks, so we know how, we can do it, but it's not the intention.
Good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Related to that, on transportation, different mobility options?
Yeah. So we had a lot of conversation at the planning commission about, you know, different mobility options, pathway connections and things particularly. We've greatly expanded the pathway systems on our site and expanded the opportunities to connect out to the undeveloped sites on either side and to the pathway system along the new Sherer Rings Road. So we're very supportive of that.
I was thinking more about different forms of getting folks to and from the facility in terms of transportation.
You know, we, I think we would be highly supportive of it as, you know, code of develop, continues to develop alternative options. They've got a pilot project going on, as you know, in Grove City right now. We certainly have the capacity to handle it at our front door and with the way our drop off is designed, so, but we'd be highly supportive.
Anything else from down here? Chris, anything? Thank you.
No, I have a question. You're going to relocate the Creamer Ditch, and you said it's been moved to the south? I didn't see it on the site plan. Is that along the front of the property then?
It's on the front. It's just down by old, the city's actually moving it as part of the road project, and it's going to be located down near old Sherer Rings.
We're relocating the ditch.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the site plan. I couldn't tell really where it was.
It's further south.
Not on their site anymore.
Yeah, we didn't have an overall site plan.
And then I guess the question is back to why the reduction in tree sizes? What's the logic of doing that?
Well, I think it's to get a mix, particularly in the island area, the big, huge island area, so we create more of a grove, so we go from small to large, not, not necessarily to try and downsize trees or economize, but to allow young trees and more mature trees to be planted in one area.
Okay, so is this like, you know, just thinking my way through this, is this like your larger tree elements and your deciduous tree elements or your ornamental decorative tree elements? Are those the one and a half inch trees? Is that what you were thinking? And the other trees, your shade trees, in other words, your oaks and your other trees are going to be the two inch trees and...
I think...
I mean, what a ratio established is, who is what and how many trees?
Well, we don't have a specific design yet.
Okay.
But we wanted the palette to include smaller trees. So if we create a grove, for example, of deciduous trees, we can mix the sizes in there, so it doesn't look like all the trees are planted all the same size all the same time. It can, it can have a more natural appearance. So it really, you know, we're not interested in trying to economize by, you know, half an inch tree size or anything like that. It's really meant to open up the palette a little bit.
So what's the larger end tree that you'll use? So will you go two and a half, three inch on some things then?
No, I imagine when we get into the courtyard areas, we'll go much larger than that.
Okay.
You know, in the courtyard areas where we need instant impact and shade and we're trying to create a garden condition for patients and families, the trees will be significantly larger, probably four inches.
This is one rare example where there will be a lot more trees after the development than before the development. Because I don't think there's any out there now.
They're hard to find right now.
Just along the creek.
Yeah.
I'd just like to share with fellow council members, at planning and zoning, there was quite a bit of discussion about the landscape and the, and the environment around the facility. We know that the facility is needed, but what planning and zoning talked about with OSU is that, and we're seeing it with the, with Health and Art, is that by having this amenity here, and it's the first one to come to this district, is that if, that in, working in partnership to try to create a sense of well-being from the minute that you approach it, and that that is a use that the community can use, whether you're inside the facility or not, that all aspects of the landscape and the, and the environment around it is a wellness statement, right? And that's why we were so, we talked so much about the pathways and about the meditation gardens and the approach and how you get from your car, because if many of us have been to ambulatory care centers, most of the time, you're parking out in the back 40, and you have to walk across lots and lots of parking spaces, dodging cars to try to get there. It's a very uncomfortable way for people who are healing or who need help to manage the environment outside of the building. So I think that in, be able to use the flexibility of a PUD to ask for these amenities to occur in the environment outside is just as important as, as some of the building structure is. And I, I have to commend that, that they've, they've come back with lots of good ideas about that, so.
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Ms. Fox. If you can pull the site plan back up and I give you a specific example of that point. On the, on the north side of what's labeled as the ASC building, actually, the first floor of that, of that facility on that back half is, is about 15,000 square feet of rehabilitation space. So it'll be all glass back there and actually have an access to go out to the back. That'll be well landscaped and have paths because as we rehabilitate, we need to rehabilitate in natural conditions as well of what people will experience. And then, of course, in, in nicer weather, people want to get outside. It is helps, it promotes healing. So that's specifically, Erin mentioned about how important it is to design from the inside out. That's one specific example that we're really thinking about, you know, what, what services go on which floors and which positions to really benefit from natural light, benefit from getting outside as part of your treatment and rehabilitation.
It's going to be a fantastic facility and amenity, and Dublin is thrilled to have OSU here. I know you're here already, but this is going to be a much bigger splash. And if you're good old fashioned zoning, huh, Erin? Going back to the, dusting off the PUD manual, old school style. Anybody have anything else to say? Okay, we greatly appreciate you coming in, and we will see you back here on the 4th of November. Now, these we're doing together, right? These, the next ones we're doing separately.
These trees are to everyone. We'll be up there.
No, but I want to do what you want me to do. Okay, I move that we waive council rules to address resolutions 54-19, 55-19, and 56-19 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Jenny, ordinance 54, oh, read them, I guess. Here we go.
5419, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary, necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.041 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights and a 0.075 acre standard highway easement from AV Tedeschi to, and JC Tedeschi located at 5491 Cara Court for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. 5519, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.110 acre fee simple warranty deed for right-of-way without limitation of existing access rights, a 0.040 acre temporary construction easement and a second 0.010 acre temporary construction easement from Vineyard Christian Fellowship at Tuttle Crossing located at 5400 Avery Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. Ordinance 5619, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.041 acre standard highway easement from Brian Reitler and Erica Reitler, trustees of the Cara Road Trust Agreement dated June 22, 2018, located at 6129 Cara Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge.
Thank you, Jenny. Paul?
Members of council, site acquisition for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension and AV Road Improvements Project has been programmed for 2018 and 2019, although construction of the project is not currently programmed. As previously reported to you, the project requires the acquisition of property interest from multiple property owners consisting of 45 parcels within the project area. These ordinances are the last three acquisitions that staff anticipates to be before council for the foreseeable future. These are all some of the least costly of the acquisitions and all are at or near the appraised value or the fair market value. To date, this brings the total settled acquisitions to 31 parcels with 14 remaining, of which only four have an appraised value of less than $10,000. Staff recommends adoption of these three ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on November 4th. Staff would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on November 4th.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Paul. Ordinance 57-19, Jenny?
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Hagerty Insurance Agency, LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Colleen?
Good evening. We have been working with Hagerty Insurance out of Traverse City, Michigan, and they are an insurance company for vintage boats and classic cars. They have been to the market several times. We have been competing with another state for this project. So this would result in 164 new jobs by the end of 2023 and a 10-year lease in Dublin. We are proposing seven-year performance incentive at 20%, capped at $200,000. The company will be present at second reading, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council?
Colleen?
Yes.
Thanks for dragging them from out of state. That's a pretty amazing accomplishment.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll see you back on November 4th on that one. How about ordinance 58-19, Jenny?
Determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Colleen?
Good evening. I am batting for Jeremiah here, so be kind. So we are working with the owners of 525 Metro Place North. They have previously done a PACE project, and they are back to do a second project. This one would be a $165,000 improvement to the elevators, outdoor lighting, to LEDs. So as in the past, there's several ordinances and resolutions that are tied to getting a PACE project approved before it can go to the Energy Special Improvement District downtown, and they are working with the finance authority, Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority. 5819 is the ordinance to determine to proceed, so I can address each one as we go here if you have any questions.
Any questions at this point? Okay, we'll be back on November 4th. How about ordinance 59-19, Jenny?
Leaving special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Okay, so 6019 is authorizing and approving the actual agreement that was attached in your packet, that this is probably the most significant of the documents.
Okay, so let's stop, 5919, I'll introduce that. And then have you read 6019?
Not yet.
Why don't you read that now?
Authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., OH15 Dublin LLC, Via Quest, Inc., and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., 525 Metro Place North LLC, Via Quest, Inc., and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects.
I will introduce that one as well. Same thing, I assume, Colleen?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on those three? There will be a second hearing on November the 4th. Hearing none, we will move on to your next one, ordinance 61-19.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Avery Surgery Center, LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city and authorizing the execution of a economic development agreement.
I will introduce that as well, Colleen.
Great. So we were approached by a group of physicians interested in locating an ophthalmology and otolaryngology surgery center in Dublin. This is something they were looking to cite somewhere in the northwest area, Hilliard, Worthington, Dublin. They have identified multiple sites. We believe we have narrowed down one in Dublin. This would create 15 jobs. They would add seven additional by the end of 2025. We have proposed a five-year, 10% performance incentive capped at $11,000, and this would also require them to construct a new facility in the city, and they will have representation here at second reading as well.
Fantastic. Any questions from council on that one?
If they don't construct, then they're at a 15-year lease.
Correct, correct. They were determining ownership issues, whether to build it and own it or build it and then lease it back from the doctor's group. So that would require them building it and showing a 15-year lease.
Regardless, it would be new construction then. It wouldn't be, they, they won't occupy an existing facility that would, they would have a lease on. It would be new construction.
It would have to be new construction.
Irrespective of the ownership.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Colleen. We'll see you back on November 4th, is that as well, on that as well. Introduction in public hearing on resolutions. I move that we waive council rules to address resolutions 5419 and 5519 together. Is there a second?
One second.
Jenny?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
54-19, Jenny?
Approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 1710, and Resolution 5519, approving the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
I will introduce both of those. Colleen, since you're still standing.
Yes, these are the resolutions approving the petition of the actual assessment and approving the necessity of the improvement to the property.
Any questions from council? Jenny?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 56-19?
Accepting an economic development strategic plan update for the city of Dublin.
Colleen?
Okay, so after nine months of research and data collection and a lot of great discussion with the seven of you, we are here this evening with the final report and the resolution asking for the adoption of the new strategic plan. We have Deborah Cummings here this evening, our consultant with Techonomy. We are going to briefly present, if you would like to hear so, the four new strategies, 11 actions, and the dozens of tactics that are associated with the new strategic plan, and we are both available to answer questions that you have as well. So I will hand it over.
Proceed, who goes first?
Hand it over to Deborah.
You?
Great.
Take it away.
So thank you all. It's a pleasure to be before you again this evening. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read the complete strategy, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but we wanted to quickly run through, and I don't control the slides, perfect. So just to remind everyone that, and through all of our discussions, we kind of came to the recognition that what needed to be done to truly move Dublin forward and to continue the economic prosperity that the city has been able to prosper from, but to make sure that that prosperity will continue for the next 10, 20, 30 years, that we wanted to be able to create a strategy that was multifaceted but that built on one another. And what we really recognized, kind of as we thought about the key economic development facets, was that first, you had to have a place, you had to have sites, you had to have locations that were of interest to companies' expansion and attraction, so the creating of distinctive development nodes throughout the city. You then had to make sure that the process by which economic development would occur would certainly meet your standards but also be friendly to business, and so to make sure that the processes that were in place would not hinder that economic development but would really foster and catalyze academic development, hence streamlining the development process. That, then, doing those two things, then, would open you to the ability to really build off of the comparative advantages that the city clearly has, that we've outlined extensively in the appendices and the, and the industry cluster analyses and whatnot. And while all economic development could foster under creating distinctive nodes and streamlining development processes, you then really had the opportunity to be distinctive and to set Dublin apart from many of your competitors, both within the greater Columbus metro region, but really globally, to say, here's what we're, have real distinct comparative advantage, and this is what we're really gonna kind of anchor our economy in, and so hence nurturing the growth of targeted industry clusters. Recognizing that none of this can occur without really strong public-private academic partnerships, so that key enabling, making sure that everyone is at the table, rowing in the same direction, and so recognizing that, and then recognizing finally that while it was not the purpose of this economic development strategy, none of this can occur without Dublin being able to maintain a very high-quality infrastructure and high-quality of place, which obviously is part of other plans and other efforts by this community. So recognizing that this is just part of a broader strategy around those issues. So saying that, we have developed the four strategies. Strategy one is to create the distinctive development nodes to meet 21st century industrial demand for vibrant physical space. That's to be accomplished through four specific actions, building on the momentum of the Bridge Park, Bridge Street District, moving the West Innovation District forward by setting the conditions for development attractive to the targeted industry clusters. Focusing, action three is focusing efforts to redevelop the Dublin corporate area and legacy office parks and provide additional points of connection to alternative living and retail space. And then, action four, which is to be able to then connect these development nodes through the deployment of mobility technologies, really serving as a suburban testbed for mobility technologies moving forward. There are numerous tactics under each of these actions. I'm not going to go into those details, but I'm happy to answer any questions as we move forward.
And, and let me interrupt for just a second. We can stop after each strategy if you'd like to ask questions.
Why don't we do that? Because it'll be impossible to keep this all straight. So does anybody have any, any questions or comments about strategy number one?
So you saw three primary areas, right? Pressed to develop, and I was just curious, like, looking at other things like OCLC, is that just too far into the future for a potential node of development?
So we considered that to be part of the legacy office park. While separate, that to us would be within that realm of taking any of the legacy office buildings is maybe another way of thinking of it, large footprints and redeveloping in the, them in the future.
So did, in your report, did you break that down, say, okay, we're looking at OCLC, we're looking at the Metro Center, we're looking at?
We were specific, I'm not going to say that we specifically called out OCLC, but we certainly did speak about different sections, sections of the Metro Office Park and Blazer Park Office Park and whatnot was broken out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on strategy number one? Okay, Deborah, number two.
So strategy two, then, is really looking at, Colleen, if you can advance the slide. No. Streamlining and making more predictable the development processes, thereby reducing uncertainty. Action five seeks to achieve that by fostering understanding and predictability regarding the type of development being sought within Dublin and adhering to the stated visions and plans for development as you pass and approve them. And then, action six is trying to reduce the uncertainty in the decision-making process, and we have a series of tactics and recommendations under how to do those two things. Any questions?
Questions about strategy number two?
I do, and it's, it's about tactics, and I, and even though this is a framework, I am sure there is some flexibility in adding tactics.
Absolutely, and what, every time we talk about them, we state, these are a series of recommendations, others can be added to it, some of these, you know, you may choose not to go along. There's just a series of ideas.
Right, because as we've talked before, sometimes reducing that uncertainty, even though we are talking here about a cason process between planning and zoning, Architectural Review Board, our commissions, I do think that much of what happens in process happens through that pipeline of starting with, with someone who's interested, getting to a, a master plan, the master plan is then not really well communicated to commissions, commissions are the ones who have to decide at some case to make recommendations, counsel. As long as, as long as the recommendations of tactics is fluid enough, that as we see the need, obviously, to improve process, then, then, you know, that's fine with me.
Any other questions or comments on strategy number two? Okay, Deborah, three?
Okay. Strategy three is focusing on nurturing the growth of targeted industry clusters through proactive attraction and business retention and expansion activities. This is really kind of broken into three key areas. Action seven is really focusing on enhancing the existing economic development efforts that already occur, and are really focused on building a broader constituency of thought leaders that can bring significant impact to the economic development process through public-private partnerships. Action eight is then focused on, really on the three industry clusters that have been identified as the greatest opportunity for Dublin to pursue from a comparative advantage standpoint, so on these key industry clusters, which are the IT and computer services cluster, the medical biosciences and healthcare services, including leveraging what you were talking about just earlier this evening, the OSU Medical Center development, and then around the mobility technologies. And then, action nine is really focused on saying that particularly if you do strategy one well, and then really focusing in on and are able to target these industry clusters, there's really an opportunity to capture a larger portion of the greater Columbus region, scaling high-growth companies that are outgrowing a lot of their office spaces in the downtown Columbus region and making Dublin that kind of mecca and hub for these growing and scaling firms.
Any questions about strategy number three? Kathy?
To me, there's just so much meat in this one, right? This is really, to your point, if we have a place and we have a process, this is, to me, a heart of the strategy, then, is what is gonna differentiate what we do distinctly. And, and I'm still struggling a little bit under the, say, action number eight. What will be those distinctive things? What are those unique things? I, I certainly wouldn't disagree with anything that's on here. These look like important tactics to me, but I, I would, I would encourage, and I don't know if, how we necessarily do that, but let's just take the IT and computer science. What, what will be distinctive about this, if we have the place, that, that we really will have something that, that makes our sandbox more unique? We've branded it, okay, we've engaged with schools. The nugget of this, I'm still not quite sure, and maybe that's still, you know, a, a work in progress, or help me, am I being articulate as to what the?
We can certainly focus on IT. So when we talk about being the sandbox for IT companies, first of all, what we're really meaning is that the city itself is open to new IT technologies and being that first customer. So allowing some of these startups and, and growing firms, and then also linking to first customers, so whether the insurance companies, the healthcare systems here, Cardinal Health whatnot, are, are serving as those first, first customers, both the city as a maybe an alpha test and these new, and these larger anchors as the beta test for some of these new technologies. So that's what we mean by that. Dublin CIO is already attempting to do some of these programs. We're saying support that, increase those efforts, and really make Dublin the heart of saying, if you're gonna be an IT company and, and starting these new developments, Dublin's a place to really be the testbed to be able to prove your products and services. On further promoting Dublin's strength as a leading hub of IT, we went through all of the data, have shown how Dublin has a unique comparative advantage in terms of who lives here and the occupations. IT is one of the leading national needs, so being able to say, you come to Dublin, you've got a workforce right here, living here, is a very unique position, so that's more of a mark, you don't need to do anything other than market the fact that it exists. But that does then engage with Dublin City Emerald Campus, because we do feel that that is a very unique opportunity that can grow significantly and expand. We've talked with companies who said they're already utilizing these high school internships and co-op programs, taking kids who were planning on going straight into a four-year program and creating up co-ops immediately. So again, this pipeline of talent that already exists, that's living here, maybe commuting into the city, could be working here in Dublin, as well as this pipeline of new talent we think is really unique. But again, all of these things are, are interwoven, so what I will say is that in addition to those areas in the IT and computer services, you have the opportunity to potentially move into the digital health area, which we put under biomedical, but we're seeing a lot of startups and new activity in that space. Certainly, mobility technologies is all driven by the IT platforms, and so that's a connection point. Most of the firms that are scaling in this region, other than a few bioscience companies, are all IT-related, and so again, looking at what can you attract, why would they want to be here? And then, on strategy four, we're talking about more industry cluster groups, networking people together, so again, being very proactive in this IT space to try to bring people together and build that cluster.
Yeah, and, and as I said, I think the tactics make sense. What, what I would love to see, because this is our strategy, that, that we could say success would look like in five years' time, that we have, and I'm making this up, that we have achieved, we've doubled the, the IT footprint in, in Dublin.
Okay.
Or we've doubled it in a certain area, or we've, we've been able to attract three or four emerging, I mean, the strategy nuggets of this that says, this is what would move the needle, because these are all important things, but so from a strategy. So that's more of a high level under action eight. It says, focus the economic development on key industry, key industry clusters to achieve X, Y, or Z. So I'm, I'm looking so more of that, we'll have a, we'll have success if X happens from a strategy perspective, and I, I'm not suggesting that we have to have that answer tonight, but for me, in, in this particular area, because so much of the meat of the matter, from my opinion, exists here, I think that's worth our time as we, as we kind of move this forward.
So I don't, real quick, I don't disagree, and what I would say is the very last slide that I have, doesn't set what your goal is, but it sets exactly those things. Are you going to try to get a location quotient of, of 2.25? Are you going to try to increase by half the number? Those are all in there, and so it's simply the council saying, you know, here's how we're going to measure success, and this is the goal we're going to try to achieve.
And to me, those sort of have to go together. To, to me, to say, this is the strategy we're going after, success looks like this for us, and, and I'm not quite sure.
I think she kind of alluded to that in her comments initially about outpacing the region, and, you know, I think that's one of the.
By 1%, 2%?
Right. It, it isn't measurable, but, you know, I think that's what drove us to pursuing this strategy, right? Is that we felt, well, the data told us that we weren't, we, we were falling behind, and we weren't keeping up regionally. So I, I think if we monument some of those things about how we want to perform, and I don't know what those numbers are either, but certainly, we wanted to outpace the region.
I would suggest you're addressing this through your goal of measurement, that we had a work session on not too long ago. I, I do see those tying in. You identified finance, economic development as, as two of those key areas of measure, so I kind of see those, I see this as the way to get there, and I see, you know, that effort being how we're gonna measure that. I think as long as we're conscientiously tying these things together, we know this is a living document, it's a living plan, a tact, a strategy, that we gotta tie those things together. So I, I think between those two things, we're gonna try to tackle what, what you're after there.
Thank you.
All right, any other comment or question on strategy number three? Deborah, number four.
So then, strategy four is really focused on that public-private partnership by sustaining these partnerships to catalyze value-added collaborations. It's connecting the industrial leadership with the city leadership on a regular basis, both through industry roundtables as well as developer and commercial real estate brokerage roundtables, and then it's establishing more effective industry networks to better connect local companies to each other and to the broader community, and we have a series of tactics under that, of suggestions on how to do that.
Quick question on that, so does that, is that region-specific or is that more Dublin-specific?
That is Dublin-specific.
That is Dublin-specific, okay.
Any other comment or question on strategy number four?
Well, yeah, this might, not exactly, is there a, or have you studied a program where, you know, you're trying to secure the house, I guess, if, if you draw the CEOs in and you have the kind of housing that they're gonna want, that's a positive thing, because it seems like, and then they'll draw in the business, because they don't really like to drive. And so, is there, has there ever been a study on, on that particular thing, like what kind of housing or should be part of our tactics to create that kind of area? And there's gonna be a huge diversity in that. Some are gonna wanna live in high-rises and some are gonna live in large houses, but has there anything ever been done in, in your field on that particular aspect of creating that kind of wealth?
So a lot of the second chapter actually talks to that point of what are the disruptive forces, and I guess if, if I can say respectfully, what we're finding actually in economic development is the opposite of that. It, it very much used to be that the CEO said, and I worked in Boise, Idaho in the early 90s, and it was, I don't wanna live in California, and I really like skiing, and this is where I wanna live, and I'm moving my company here. That's no longer how companies are operating, for the most part. They are recognizing that talent is their number-one issue, and they have to go to where the talent wants to live, and so being able to create, and that's what we talk a lot about around a live-work-play environment and creating the different types of developments that attract everything from the millennials to the empty nesters, but making it so that the talent and workforce wants to be there is actually what companies are looking for, not necessarily just where, and hopefully there, and the CEO also wants to live there, and so you have to look at the whole spectrum, but it really is much more than just, I like it here and everybody else will move here, too.
Yeah, and I was more thinking of a micro scale, you know, of, of developments, the kind of developments that attract CEOs. We did a tour of those a year or so ago, and so we were just wondering, you know, and what you said, I'm sure is absolutely true, they have to go where the talent's at. And then, you know, of those particular pods and choices by the CEO, which one has the most attractors for him to move into, which is, then generally, they locate their company in that area? If, and this is by and by away from the, you know, already assumed fact that you're, you're going after the talent, so, but I, I didn't know if there's anything, if you ever got down to a micro, you know?
We did not get specific housing that CEOs potentially.
Yeah, what are they looking for? What do they want, you know? What kind of communities do they need? Okay.
Any other question or comment on strategy four?
Just, I wanna tag on to what you said, John, because I think in, in some ways, what may be not addressed here that we take for granted is the environment of the city that is attractive and. is attractive in its already-present state. And not to, not in any way to diminish the efforts of the economic development strategy and the tactics, but if we don't concentrate on making sure that the amenities here within the city and the things that our DNA, as Scott Dringhead says, brings people here and want to come here, if we don't make sure that they don't belong in this piece as well, we can unbalance the city in a way that we're just thinking about more business, more building, and before you know it, the things that make the city attractive have not been paid as much attention to, because we're focusing so much on bringing people in. So I think, I would love to see added in this, a tactic about looking at ways that we can even enhance some of the aspects here we have, like the public art, the pieces and parts that make people want to live in a city, so that we can identify them, so that on the soft pieces, those abstract things that make people want to live in a community, that we are always focusing and remembering that those are as important as a foundation to bringing people and new economies in here, because they'll want to stay, because there's so much here that's enjoyable. That's just as important.
I don't disagree, and it's actually, in my opinion, covered in Strategy One, where we very much talk about that when we talk about these nodes, and it's just not these four nodes, it's the city. But we talk about the community development plan and the vision for that, and what the look and the feel, and how it all has to fit together, and it goes back to even the diagram with the circle around it, and we talk about that. But this isn't just happening in a vacuum. If you feel that language needs to be strengthened, I certainly respect that, but I do feel that it's covered in Strategy One, as well as, just as we talk about the overall strategy. And we talk about public art and all of those things you just mentioned.
The only thing that I, when I read Strategy Number Four, I'm tempted to say foster sustainable, public-private, and public-public partnerships, because so much of what's happening now, and we're seeing that particularly in the region, are strong public-to-public partnerships as well. And I know we do that, we have done that, I know we talked about that, but I didn't necessarily see that called out in this document, or I missed it.
We can certainly add, when we talk about public-private partnerships, we're talking about the whole gamut, whether it's private-to-private, private-to-public, public-to-public, it's the whole gamut. It's partnerships.
But I'm not seeing that on, I mean, Action Ten is leaders to city. I don't see an action that talks about our ability to connect with our other publics. So, yeah.
If that dash was an "and" instead of a dash?
No, I'm looking for sort of an action like 12 or something. It's not, see, Action Ten, connect industrial leadership with city leadership, checkmark, agreed. Establish more effective industry networks. And I'm saying that to create the public-public partnerships here, and continue to think about how we do that. And I know as one Columbus's strategy becomes more obvious, there's going to be opportunities for us to do some more of that in here. So I'm thinking it needs to be...
I actually agree with you, Kathy, because it's not just about industry and business. It's also, you know, we have neighbors, other municipal neighbors, that we have to make sure that our infrastructure that surrounds, that's on the borders of our city, can support what we're trying to bring into the city limits. So I actually think that's a really important piece to consider when we talk about the things that Dublin has that are attractive to businesses, because if you can't get in and out of the city, I don't know.
Can we just put sustainable partnerships?
That would be great.
Great. And then just an action item, if you think about mobility, we think about affordable housing, we think about all of these things that we've talked about here. We are just not going to be able to do that without some new strategies in economic development. So, again, I think the pieces are all there. I think it's just pulling them, because I know we talked about, and we're going to talk a little bit, I think there's some notes about supporting certainly Morpsy's and CODAs and these other strategies.
Yeah, I tend to agree. That's a key one to call out.
So let us look, with your permission, we will certainly at least alter the language. I know that we talk about, because I had to change it, where it used to be all Columbus 2020, and then it had to be a big global search and replace, where we're talking about their new name, and talking about Morpsy and whatnot. Let's see if we need to actually create a 12th strategy, or if it's in there, and we just need to make sure the language is reflective of that.
And I would like to, I would like to see stronger language on a strategy of maintaining quality of place. I just think it's just something that needs to be always considered, because as you bring in more and more development, it changes, it changes the place. And so we, I think a strategy has to be, or a consideration at least, that we're always reevaluating the work that we're doing and how the quality of place is behaving with it.
Where did you say, Deborah, that you thought that was kind of alluded to?
Under Strategy One.
Yeah.
Not in that specific language, and maybe Strategy One needs to be expanded to stay, create distinctive development nodes, demand for vibrant physical space while still maintaining, you know, the quality of place of Dublin. I mean, we can play with that. The language, the descriptive language in the narrative talks about that, but maybe the language in the strategy needs to be more...
I think it's a pretty, it's a good point, Jane. I mean, that's where we started from, you know? And this effort is to keep up. It is to add to our assets, not to change what we have before. And preserving what you have before is pretty important. So can, you think you got a sense of what that?
Right. And the reason I feel that way is because we've noticed, as we've added, as we added Bridge Park, people questioned, how did you, what are you changing here? And when you have the conversation about quality of place, you bring a reassurance to the community that it is always still an important consideration. Quality of place will always be first and foremost. The economic impact that we bring here will never change quality of place. So I think it has to be called out here, so that people have that sense of understanding.
I think it's the common thread that should be run through everything, so that as we progress and move forward, that we never forget and are always cognizant of what are the tacit things that make this city so amazing to live in.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, because, you know, they're talking about the huge growth in central Ohio, but then once you get here, and of course, we don't have any mountains, and we don't have a lake or an ocean, but, you know, as they get here to investigate our staffing, their staffing needs, then they start looking around to say, okay, what's communities the best community to live in? Where do I want to put my family? And that's where this quality of place becomes really important. What's the traffic like? What's the amenities? What's there that my family can enjoy? What's the schools like? And so that's where you can really put the fish in the bucket, so to speak, when you get to that stage. And that's why that's really important.
You may want to call it out separately, so that it's a definitive, one of the, one of the fifth strategy. It may be that important, that we're always looking at that with strength, but it's just a, I think it's very important.
Because if not, they're going to go to another community. It's that simple.
Are we going to edit this on the fly, or should we postpone this and allow this to come back as a file?
I would, you know, I think we have on the record what your intent is. I would ask that you trust us to make those adjustments if you generally feel you're supportive of the strategy, and, you know, direct us to make the adjustments to the language accordingly. I think the record would be pretty clear. I think we understand the intent, if you trust us to do that.
Okay, so so far, we need to reference back to what we already had. Because, you know, whenever you see these videos, like Scott comes in and plays the videos, they fly through Bridge Street, but then they show the parks, and they show the bike paths, and they show the falls, and they show all the other things around our community. And I think you make a very interesting point. You have a good point, John, that the CEOs, they still have those big houses if they want to live in, and they have that as an option, and their talent and their workforce has Bridge Street, so it's another option. So if we do that, and then if we include connecting to other public entities, other governments, and referencing to that...
Yeah, they were specifically leaving the language, just partnerships, sustainable partnerships in general.
Okay. Anything else that we, not to cut off, not to cut you off, Deborah, but I guess we were at Strategy Four. Is there any other comment we have on any of that stuff, or are we done commenting?
That's it.
What else did you want to go through, Deborah?
I'll just go to the very last slide.
Okay.
Before we do, could you go back to that, the slide that you skipped over? I was interested why there was nothing to be considered critical under Strategy Three. I just, it was just interesting to me that capturing the, these core industries in a time of economic growth, that it didn't rise to, we have three criticals under distinctive development nodes, but nothing there. And I was curious what the thinking is.
Well, and I can interrupt there and say that that's something that we do every single day. I think that's Strategy Number One on my team right now.
Then it would be critical, right?
Well, it's critical every day, so it's incredibly important that we focus on those specific and newer industries, but this is something that is the heart of what we do in our profession.
For me personally, I don't like critical, important, significant distinctions at all. I think they're all critical, that's why we're talking.
Well, and again, to that point, I look at this overall strategy, and I, with huge credit to how hard everybody works, there's just more work here than your team could put their arms around. I mean, there is just enormous amount of work to be done here, right? Every day. So to me, this was the stack ranking of what we would prioritize first and second, Greg. So that is really the reason I brought it up. Without that on there, and I'd be perfectly fine not to necessarily have this either, but if this is going to be the stack ranking, then that's the reason I question it. If it's not there, if it's there for a different reason. But I just, you know, I just recognize just the tremendous amount of work implementing this strategy that you've put forth. It's a pretty bold strategy.
Well, and I would love to remind everyone that works for the city that this is a citywide strategy. It's not just the four of us.
I understood.
So I think some of the critical pieces are where we need to be engaged with the planning department, and the building department, and the parks department, and city council, getting you all more engaged in those strategies. I think some of the things that are listed as critical are because maybe it has always been a focus of just my team of four, and we need to broaden that, because it's critical that we need to bring more partners in.
So maybe just, and I know, maybe just a refocusing of this, because I was just a bit concerned about if this was a prioritization approach, or a timing approach, that I might have a difference of opinion on some of that.
So it certainly says priorities, so I don't want to say it's not a prioritization, but I guess what I will say is that when you look at how we defined critical to important to significant, you know, critical was, this is essential for Dublin's economy to not stagnate, but actually to keep up with the disruptive headwinds and continue to grow. The industry cluster strategies, please, no, it's what I spend my life on. I think it's very important, but what I'm saying is, is that if you do the critical things, the industry cluster strategies will come, and more importantly, companies will come, and industry will grow. And so are these the absolute only clusters? You know, five years from now, it may be something, you know, five years ago, mobility technologies wasn't even on the radar screen. So I think, I'll own that. I think that was more my reaction of, look, these are the critical things that you have to do if you want to maintain Dublin as a very unique place that people want to be. The industry will then come, and these are important things to do, but whether it's mobility technologies or something else five years from now, it's that industry will come, and the free capital markets will have responded to the economic policies that you set.
So I think rejiggering this chart to say, to say what you said makes a lot of sense to me.
I would like that.
As it currently exists, I'm not, I don't read it that way, and from a prioritization. So to your point is, it's more of a timing thing even than, so...
And maybe just getting rid of the priority and leaving that timing is what needs to be done.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Because you can't do everything.
Yeah.
And so the timing is, this is the logical order of how things will flow.
Because this will be our direction, right, to the team to say, move here, move now. And so I do think it's important to get that right. Thank you.
So is it a little bit of a dependency thing? Kind of have to do some things before you do some other things? So maybe that's, I don't know, maybe that's sort of that knowledge piece that we're addressing.
Dana? Well, what I was going to add was, I'm trying to, I want to support what your economic development director is telling you here, and that is, this, I would look at this as critical path. You can't move along some fronts if you don't work along the critical front that they're suggesting you work on. This is a living document, and that criticality will shift. If you don't have a place to put people, hence Strategy One, you're not attracting Strategy Three. And if you are at a low vacancy rate, which you are trending that way now, you've got no place to put people. So what your economic development director, I think, is telling you is you have got to have a critical path to create the capacity to attract those, because you don't have it. And that's, so I think...
And I'm asking then just, let's make it say that, then.
But we have had, you know, opportunities to attract mobility, IT, and sometimes we've lost those, because we just had no place to put them, or we couldn't move fast enough to put them. And that's not a, you know, and this was discussed, too, in part of your retreat, which is how this has worked its way into this, I think, as well. So, you know, I understand it does say priority. I look at a critical path, where, you know, if these things don't happen first, we're not going to be able to move. But as Colleen told you, they're working it every day critically, and we all work in that every day. So I, maybe that's just a different twist on it.
No, I appreciate that, too, because I think, you know, of all these items, we've got to pick out the ones we've got to move on, and I think you're absolutely right. And that's why the designation was really sort of important. I mean, and thank you. That's, you know, this is what makes Dublin sort of great. We try to look ahead, we're always working on something out there, and if we don't, we're going to go to the number-two position or three position. So, thank you.
Okay, Deborah, you wanted to go over strategic measures of success.
Just simply to respond, the Councilwoman, Doris, said just, I would, and I was going to say, even before you said this, that to me, what's in orange is the critical, if you're really thinking about, I want to set measures of success, I want to define in five years, what do we look like? In 10 years, what do we look like? Putting numbers to those measures, I think, is what would be good for the council to be looking at.
Okay. Any questions about this chart? Nothing? Okay, so we've given them some guidance to make a couple of adjustments, and we're comfortable with them making those adjustments. So then, are you done, Deborah?
Right.
Are we ready to vote? Does anybody...
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the well-researched background, the look at the trends. I mean, so much of it is happening so fast around us, that sometimes, I don't know if we're looking at the forest, or the trees, or the logs on the ground, or what it is, but I very much appreciated the holistic look at what's happening around us and helping us pull that together in the data, and that, not an easy task. So it's a huge order of work, but I appreciate your staff's...
Well, thank you very much.
...work and effort on that, because I think it really helped us create some context around this from a prioritization. So I just want to say thank you for that work and for the team's work on that.
Okay, great. Anything else from anybody? Okay, Jenny?
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you, Deborah, very much for all of your hard work. We greatly appreciate it. Resolution 57-19, Jenny?
Establishing a task force to update the historic district area plan, providing a vision for the future of the district, defining the duties, functions, duration, and composition of the task force, and authorizing the engagement of Heritage Ohio to assist with the initial assessment.
I will introduce it. Dana?
Thank you, members of council. As the title says, this is about a resolution to appoint a citizen task force to conduct a historic district area plan update visiting process. You had asked us at your October 7 meeting to come back with a proposed resolution. This resolution tries to lay out duties, functions, duration, composition, and so forth, as well as authorizing the city manager in or into an agreement with Heritage Ohio for their downtown assessment resource team, or DART, visit. Staff recommends passage of this resolution. I think you've got a couple options in front of you here. You may want to pass the resolution, obviously with any changes you may want to make. This was kind of my stab at what I think you all want this task force to do. So with any modifications or as-is, you could choose to pass this resolution. Obviously, there are not task force member names in this resolution yet. We could bring those back separately, and you could then adopt those names, or appoint those folks, if you will. Or you can just postpone it and do it all at once. I do think there could be value in going ahead and passing the resolution tonight, so that we could say to people, hey, here is, here are the duties and functions, you know, and that we would, you know, want you to perform in this role, and we could share that
that with them. It's more finite, but we could go either way. Okay. Did I introduce it? I will if I didn't. I think that's the way to go, Dana, is to pass it and get the structure out there and then put sort of the meat on the bones after we have the opportunity to do that. I think that this effort is a clear indication of the commitment of the administration, the staff, and this council to historic Dublin, not only for the people who live there and work there, but all of us in this entire community that visited there. I've always said, my kids, when they come back home to visit their hometown, that's where they're going to go. And that's sort of the corner for everybody in this community. So I think it's a really important task that they will have. I think it's a good structure. I think the DART is a good way to kick it off, and using the task force is a great way to get everybody involved. So I think we should move forward and pass it and let staff work on bringing us the names to plug into the positions. Do you have anything, Jane?
No, you know, I think it's a great starting point for the conversation. As we talked, Heritage Ohio coming in and getting the conversation started, I still feel strongly that we have, you know, additional conversations, additional opportunities for a wider audience of the community come and talk. They should be incorporated in this, that whatever came out of that one-day event is widely publicized with opportunities for the community to talk about that sort of thing. I know that we're still working on the rezoning for, and I hope that that continues on with staff and work that we do and that this feeds into that. I'd hate to see the council's decision to look at how 161 and the rest of the historic district is looking to be rezoned, that this should play into that. It shouldn't halt the work on that, I hope.
Yeah, I would only add, section 2F, and that stands for Councilmember Fox, because I just want you to, I just figured that out. I heard you loud and clear, and I just want to make sure that I'm emphasizing this correctly. Significant community-wide and key stakeholder input is strongly encouraged, and then that's also followed with the thoughts around the task force encourages pursue educational informational efforts for itself and the community as a whole, to have that dialogue and make sure that they are emphasizing that as well along the process. So I just want to make sure that I was capturing that as one of their duties and functions. You know we need, Jane? Collaboration. That's what we need.
That'll cost you a dollar.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, Jenny?
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Resolution 58-19?
To express support of and to incorporate whenever possible the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission's Smart Streets Policy Concepts.
I will introduce it. Dana? Great. Thank you again. The Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or MORPC, as we often refer to them, approved in May a regional smart streets policy that leverages current and emerging technologies and data to provide a digital infrastructure network in support of transportation, project planning, design, and construction. I think we all know that digital connectivity and data are fundamental to delivering an efficient and complete connection of streets as a result of the changing technology in the world and how that's being applied to our mobility systems and our infrastructure. So over the past year, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission had a smart region task force that studied these concepts and put together this policy. I think MORPC believes it's the first in the nation of its kind. They also intend to apply these concepts when they evaluate the request for projects, request for funding for projects that are under their purview to help fund. So, having said that, this needs to, certainly, these thoughts and concepts about smart streets need to be incorporated into planning, programming, scoping, design, implementation, maintenance, and performance monitoring of our transportation infrastructure, not only that it's publicly built, but also that it's privately built. Staff would recommend that council pass the resolution in support of the smart streets policy concepts as developed by MORPC, and this is similar to what council has done in the past relative to the complete streets policy that MORPC put together in a similar vein, and is also considers that whenever they're evaluating projects and funding for projects. Questions from council?
So what would this mean differently in how we do street maintenance or development? Just a couple examples of adopting this would mean.
Right, so there's a lot of discussion, and you all know it very well, about smart streets initiative and the application of various kinds of evolving technology into our mobility infrastructure. So it can be anything from, you know, like we're doing in the partnership with the 33 corridor with connected autonomous vehicles and all the technology that's going in with that, traffic signalization, coordination, monitoring, smart parking. It's just, it's like an endless list now of technologies that can be integrated with infrastructure development. So we're seeing a lot of movement. In fact, it ties back into the economic development strategy you just passed, where we have companies like Denso, who just recently invested a couple million dollars into beta testing here in Dublin, the Connected Marysville Project, Smart Columbus and a lot of the initiatives they're doing. It also has social impact as well, as we see in a lot of what Smart Columbus is doing. I think Dublin is pretty advanced in this, in that we have a lot of fiber optic broadband is a key supporter of the enabling devices that help you to have smart infrastructure, and we're pretty far out ahead of everyone, I think, in that world, because we have a lot of that already and a lot of our right-of-ways. And also, it's, you know, it's also a goal of yours to continue to extend broadband more extensively through the city. So I think we've got a great jump on it with all that we've been doing in the corridor, some of the budgeting you've all have allowed in our capital budget to start to do beta testing in this world. So it just is real fitting with us, I think, in a lot of the initiatives that we're doing.
Now, I have a question. I read through the MORPC smart street policy, and I totally understand the need for it to have interoperability, you know, throughout all of the regions so that things all work together and you can have autonomous vehicles moving from one city to another, and I do understand that. And I do understand also that funding from MORPC would require that cities that want the money are going to have to abide by the policy. The only questions that I have really have to do a little bit with the data sharing. I don't understand that, really. I don't understand what's public data sharing, what data is shared across all municipalities, what MORPC gets, what is considered ours to own. And then the other one is the piece about, it's mainly about transportation, but some of it is about public securities, like cameras in neighborhoods, things like that. And I wonder, I wonder if we've gone far enough in our own policy to make sure that our citizens understand, you know, what smart cities, what smart streets might mean in their neighborhood when it comes to camera surveillance and that sort of thing. It's not really described very succinctly here. It just talks about using those kinds of things, and I wonder what we might push back on, or what we haven't discussed enough to understand what we might push back on. So, I think that it's an important thing to be part of the organization that is doing this across the municipalities, but I do, you know, security surveillance, traffic surveillance, smart lighting, all that kind of thing. What if there's something that we don't want to do? And how much of it do we really, how much of the MORPC funding do we actually use?
The policy's intentionally vague around the ideas and notion of data management and so forth, because that's evolving. And as we've discussed in other settings with you, and you've discussed among yourselves, there's a lot of evolving around data management, public policy, governance, and the like. We have the ability and potential to participate in a couple of data exchanges, be those through Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or something at the regional level, or something at the state level. We've had a lot of discussions in the council of governments and the 33 corridor about protecting data, what is local data, what, how that should be protected, what should be released to the data exchanges and so forth, even to the point that we're, you know, working on memorandums of agreement and things like that with other public agencies about that, even though we haven't got there yet, because we're still trying to figure it out. The state of Ohio has even had some consideration of potential changes to the statute around that, although they have not made much progress. Only a couple states in the United States have really made much progress. California and Arkansas are the two that I read about that have really advanced, you know, data exchanges, data management, and protection and so forth. So, all that said, we don't ever want to get over our skis in terms of how we, what we collect and not be able to protect it. We also don't want to just give things away. So everyone's antenna is very well up on that and concerned to the point that we're not just, you know, collecting data and just handing it off. So, I just want to assure you, this is a very tightly controlled process. Also, MORPC has a data committee, and they're looking at that specifically as well. So this policy would tie into other policies that they're formulating. So that's the data question. The other part about how much money we get from MORPC, I would just suggest is significant. I'm kind of looking for Megan, I'm sure she would give me a thumbs up, on that one. We get pretty significant funding from MORPC on a lot of our projects, so. And I also want to, because I was involved in writing this policy, want to make sure that I don't overrepresent that they will withhold money. I mean, this is an encouragement within the region with evolving technologies and the application of technologies for infrastructure and mobility. So, you know, they know that this has to ramp over time, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. You know, will they withhold funding for, you know, organizations or jurisdictions because they aren't completely way ahead of this? I'd say the answer is probably not. The one thing that we tried to do as a task force is make sure that all the players understood that this is where we need to get to. This is going to happen with or without us. But we wanted, back to your point about interoperability and collaboration and so forth, we wanted to get out ahead of it as a region and try to lay down some level of understanding and ground rules around it. So, this policy could very well morph over time as well, as these things evolve and become more mature.
Right. That's very helpful, because I think sometimes you look at these and you think that it just might handcuff you in certain ways, but it's a growing, flexible, learn-as-you-go policy.
Very protective of our data. You've heard me say that one a few times.
Well, I also think public privacy is one of those things that is absolutely...
Absolutely. Security and privacy.
Security and privacy, and people, as this comes across to neighborhoods and communities, and you see more and more technologies being incorporated, I think they, our residents have to understand that we're treading together, but we're treading slowly and lightly, right? So that we all understand what the impact means to us, and that we have the ability to pull back or to talk about what's right for this community.
I think it's important to acknowledge what MORPC is trying to do is, you know, it isn't perfect, because there's more things we don't know than we do in terms of smart streets and those kinds of things. But if we would let this five years go by and all of the improvements that happened at all of the intersections across the region, seven counties, and we didn't capitalize on at least getting the infrastructure in place so that when we had the capacity to do these things, that it's there, you know, the rules that govern it may not be perfect, but the infrastructure will be there and the rules will catch up. And, you know, I know Dana, and they worked extensively on committee level, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, MORPC has a, you know, a whole privacy policy plan as well, and, you know, those issues will probably come under those privacy umbrellas. This is really to try to get the infrastructure in place so that when the technology becomes available, that it is deployable in the location, all locations that have been seeing the improvements.
Anything else from council? Okay, Jen?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Council chambers update. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. With the purchase of the, whoops, sorry, excuse me. Good evening, members of council. With the purchase of the 5555 perimeter drive property, efforts have been underway to continue the realization of the city's long-term vision for the area of Kaufman Park and the consolidation of city operations with the goal of facilitating more effective services as the center of municipal government. There's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes to schedule and design a series of projects in preparation for construction activities and a sequence of staff moves. These are the facilities identified on the screen that will be impacted by either construction activities, staff relocations, or both. We're currently designing the renovations that are needed to the 5555 perimeter drive building to prepare it to house city hall and human resources staff. Once the staff moves into the new city hall, we will then have a short time to prepare the existing city hall building for the development department staff to occupy. And then, once the development department staff vacates 5800 Shire Rings Road, we will then be able to turn that property over to the new owner, and that must occur no later than April 30th of next year, per our agreement with the new owner. And we will also be moving the IT department into the space that will be vacated by human resources in the service center at 6555 Shire Rings Road. So we completed competitive selection processes and have assembled a top-notch team to help successfully deliver the design and construction activities, and also to coordinate the moves within tight timeframes. The Dublin-based firm of Horn and King Architects is providing the design services for the renovation of the existing 5555 perimeter drive building, as well as the council chambers addition that'll be built adjacent to that building. Rusili Construction is providing construction management services, and McCarthy Consulting is serving as the owner's representative for the project. This team has been collaborating and making very good progress over the past few months. They've been talking through the schedule and also design details associated with all the work. And then lastly, guiding the design of the council chambers addition is a steering committee, and that steering committee includes council member representation, P&amp;Z commission member, and city staff. And the input that has been received along the way throughout the design process from that steering committee has been invaluable to date, and I'd like to thank those that have been involved in that effort for dedicating the time to that effort. We've developed a very detailed master project schedule that I'm not going to share with you, because it's many pages and hundreds of activities, but we have boiled down a portion of that schedule into the graphic on the screen, and we're using this graphic to help us communicate with the staff, the timing of the office moves that will be occurring between now and that April 30th milestone date. These moves need to occur in a very sequential manner, and at the same time, we will be performing design and construction activities along the way. And all of this will enable us to vacate, that's the significant milestone at the end of the screen, that we've been working back from, or backing into, I guess you could say. We need to vacate that 5800 building by April 30th. That's our critical date that the entire team, all the team members have their eyes set on, and that's what we've been communicating to the staff that'll be impacted by the sequence of moves. So now that I shared some insight into all of the moving pieces associated with the bigger picture, we're pleased to show you our progress to date designing the new city hall council chambers addition. And with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Dave King with Horn and King Architects.
Good evening, everyone.
David, welcome.
Would you like to name the nurses for your records? Okay. I know you have them sometimes. So, good evening, again. I'd like to start off with, well, let me introduce Sharon Jurwitz with Horn and King Architects as well, the two of us, along with the committee members, working diligently on the process. I'd like to begin with a thank you. You are entering an excitement, you've begun now for several months now, a very excited endeavor. It's extremely exciting. It's something that we, when we saw the RFQ, thought, oh my gosh, we've got to look at this project. It was just, it's, as Chris and I were talking recently at a arts council event, and she made the comment that this is a legacy. Well, it is indeed, it's a legacy. It's a legacy for all of us and for the entire community, and we're very thankful and appreciative to be selected, to be a part of the process. Dublin is very fortunate to have been able to acquire that 555 building. One of the things that really attracted me to the project too, other than, of course, it's what it is, it's the city hall, it's a seat of government, but also its site, it's a strategic site. I was driving down the road here in front of the building with my wife Saturday, and I stopped and I said, Pat, take a look at that building in the distance. And that, of course, is the 555 building. I said, you can see it from here. And I mentioned that earlier in our conversations, that it's a central, strategic, highly visible site, and when that project is built out, it is a focal point. You can be at virtually every one of your campus buildings, and you can look and see that building. And to me, that's pretty cool, to be able to have that kind of synergy going on with a campus. So that was very important to me. That building, the 5555 building, or maybe just call it the Phi building, is very useful in that it's appropriate for the kind of use of administrative offices. Yes, there's some fixed considerations, stairs, elevators, that kind of thing, but it's overall is a very open plan, and it's allowed to be pretty flexible in bringing those four departments into the building, and, again, to be an important part of the city campus. The, I want to point out too, that the council chamber adjacent is, of course, by its very definition, is a unique facility. And so therefore, every effort's been made, and you'll see this as we go through the slides here, has been made to be a consideration, to express continuity... to be a consideration, to express continuity of the existing building, to acknowledge its presence. It's an attractive building, but yet have the transition to this other building, which is unique in its own right. So, there are elements of this, which I hope you'll recognize visually, that bring the two together, but still make a statement that each one has a specific and very important civic use. I was taking notes during the presentation of your strategic plan, and let me, let me just look at these notes, and I thought I could summarize what I was seeing there, that suggesting this feature, this building, fits very much into your economic development strategy. As you bring in people to retain businesses, to attract new businesses, other organizations, other municipalities, whatever other organization may come in, to be able to have that place be an appropriate place to conduct those kinds of meetings is critical. So, we see this as being an important part of your strategic plan, the development of the building and its site. It is, it is a marketing effort, as you know. And it's, the development of this project sets an example, too, to these other entities, that you're serious about what you're doing, and you're translating that seriousness into your own facilities, and that's an important message for you to send. And also, and the last point on that, too, the whole conversation about IT, as anybody on the committee can attest, we've had good discussions about the use of IT visual representations in both of the, both of the buildings. And you will see on the slides, well, at least certainly for the council side, the inner, the use of visual representations. You know, it could be, that's all the way from what's happening in the city tonight or this weekend, to ongoing graphics, branding efforts, whatever that might be. There are serious presentation opportunities in this building, and we're taking full advantage of it. Last comment I would like to make, and then we'll go through the slides. We very much enjoyed a very interactive, as Megan alluded to, and productive process with the team members, consisting of all the people that you've talked to. A lot of people, a lot of engagement, a lot of meetings. And as I said in our initial conversations, for me personally, these kinds of projects, these very important civic projects, are the kinds of projects I like to do as an architect because they have meat on the bone. They are very in-depth of what they do, and there's a lot of input, a lot of different levels. They're very sophisticated. And for me, that becomes a very exciting adventure. So, with that, Sharon's going to walk you through the slides, and pause us anyplace you'd like if you have a particular question about something. So, Sharon, if you would.
Thanks for having us. We have 82 slides. Just kidding. No, no one, no one's listening. Dave was supposed to bring me a pointer, but all he brought was a pop-up umbrella, so I'm just going to pretend to point, and hopefully you know what I'm talking about. What we have here are representations of what we're looking at for the 5555 building. Hopefully, you recognize the existing building, and we're looking at adding on to the west side of the building with the one-story addition that would ha- house the council chambers, the council offices, and the clerks' offices. We're trying to expand the site parking, but still keep the nature of the existing site with the, have the nice drive-in with all of the trees that line the entrance. We're trying to keep that feel of the site, even though we are trying to double the amount of parking that we have on the site. We also have a small building towards the west end of the property that will just be a brick enclosure that will have the generator and the trash and those sort of items kind of tucked away, hidden away in a nice-looking enclosure that will be off to the side of the site. These are the two main elevations of the building. The top one is the north elevation or the front elevation of the building. To the left is the existing. To the right is the addition. Like I said, it is just a one-story addition. We're trying to keep a lot of the same features of the existing building. You obviously purchased that building because you thought it was a nice-looking building. We're trying to keep a lot of those same features, matching the brick, having arched windows with the brick arched soldier course above it, having the columns, the metal roof that's on it. We will have more insulation, so it won't be as loud when it rains. I'll get a laugh. Thank you. We are looking at some of the same window features that are on the existing building and a stone base around the bottom of the building. The bottom elevation there is the south or sort of back elevation. None of the sides of the building are really a back, which is a really fun building to work with because you don't really have a backside. You can't hide things on it. Every side, we think, is very attractive. This is the side that would be looking out to the street or even up on the freeway itself. You can see this elevation of the building. They have some very nice water features and landscaping along that side of the building, which will be extending a little bit into the new portion of the project. In the middle there is a connector that will have a lot of glass in it connecting the two sort of wings of the project. And then, we have a nice covered portico that will wrap around two sides of the corner of that building. These two views are from the north portion of the building. You can see the connector from the front, that bottom one, towards the left would be the main public entrance to the addition of the building. That's where the public would come on the evening like this to come to a council meeting. They'd be entering into that. The main taller portion of the addition would be the chamber itself, and we just have, excuse me, a row of low, of higher, short windows that would be across the front of the chamber, so you don't have windows right behind you, but allowing some light into the space. The wing to the left of the chamber would be for the clerks. The wing to the right would be for the council members themselves. You have a area for your executive session, office, a conference room, and restrooms in that wing. These are views from the south elevation. You can see that covered portico that wraps around. You can see the glass connecting piece. Again, we're trying to pick up elements from the existing building. We also have, on the site towards the west, there will be a large grass area that we are trying to maintain as sort of a lawn of the building that could have public events happening in that area and just allowing a nice green space off to the west of the addition. We have a video of the inside of the building. These colors are not necessarily indicative of the colors or finishes that are going to be in the building. It was just a way to do it so it's not just black and white. I think you might have to hit play.
I did.
Oh.
Video wall, the back end there.
We'll go through it again, and I'll make more comments. If you could play it again, I'll just try to describe as we go in. We're starting at the front entrance of the building where the public will be coming in. There'll be an airlock vestibule to keep that cold winter air from coming in. We have a slight security area. If you have metal detectors. This is what we're calling the gallery, which would be small meeting space. This is our lobby, large informal gathering space that leads out to that portico area, large video wall, like Dave mentioned, the chamber itself. We try to have some columns in there, some nice hanging lighting, different lighting that could be dimmed, and then working up to the dais itself. And you can look out through the wall of glass doors that then lead to the lobby and through out to the outside of the building. So, we are trying to let a lot of natural light in, have a lot of light out into that lobby area. The lobby could act as overflow area also. If you have a large crowd like tonight, you can extend out into that lobby space. And you guys can just sit there and look out at the beautiful night air.
What's nice, too, about having this much glazing is that when something's going on in here in the evening, it's nice to have that lighted up. So, if you're driving by, you don't even have to be on the site. If you're driving by, you know, you just, you just know that City Hall, something's going on. There's some public function going on.
That is the end of what we have to present. We can go back to any of the previous slides if you would like, or if you have any questions.
Bring the floor plan up, just so you can point out a couple of things, obviously, take questions and comments. The galeria, we see that as a place where there can be displays. To the far right, that wall there that you see vertically, that's a display case. There can be displays intermittent through the spaces, solid, freestanding, much like what you do outside with the flags, et cetera. We see that as a, that's why we call it a galeria on purpose. And then, the lobby, as you mentioned. Oh, I do want to point out, you see the two red bars on the far right? Those are, that's just indicating the kind of wall that our construction, that's a security office. So, there will be a security office if you've got a place to put, whether it's a magnetometer or whatever it might be, wands, whatever, like you have here. It's a place to store all of that and have a file cabinet, if necessary. So, we are bringing that into the project. There is a, there is a kitchenette, so that if you're having an event, you can do, not a commercial kitchen, but that you can provide some sort of refreshments.
So, that does conclude our presentation for this evening. That's where we currently stand with the design of the addition building. You will be, as was mentioned in the memo, you will be seeing us again as we plant. We're planning on the second meeting in November, and we would be presenting the initial contract with Rusili for a portion of the renovations to the 5555 perimeter drive building. One other thing I wanted to note that was mentioned in the staff report as well is that this site is located in a standard zoning district, and the use is permitted. So, therefore, the project will not be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we wanted to make sure council was aware of that. And at this point, we just look forward to hearing any feedback that you may have on the status of the design thus far.
I'll just, I'll just jump in, Megan. It's, Chris and Jane and I meet, these guys, you do an absolutely fantastic job, a fantastic job. And we've met quite a few times, and it, and the amount of work that you do in between the times we meet is, is really astounding. And when you look at this floor plan, it is designed, I mean, they took comments and and feedback that we had as council people living in this space and put it right in here. And, you know, at the lower right-hand corner, there's a conference room. Off of that is a, is a sort of bigger executive session sort of room that will accommodate staff and all of council. And you go down this hallway, this hallway to the left side, that's all key-carded, right? So, that's a secured area to the left side of this. And that whole space goes back to the kitchenette area that they talked about, and then an office that we collectively as a council can share to meet with constituents or anybody else that you would want to meet in. And then, that spills into the chambers itself. And then, on the other side is the clerk's office and all the different offices there. And the space that they have designed out, what they refer to as the, sort of that lobby area, like Sharon mentioned, if you have a big issue, it can, all, the whole glass wall can open up, and it includes all that extra space. And then, that entire area is designed to be, we sort of thought that it needed to be formal. It had to have like the formality that Dave is describing, have that presence, that sense of place, where you walk in and you're know, you know you're somewhere where something important happens. But also, an area where, like, like when Jane mentions that the meetings and having the ability to have more for informal meeting space, and all of that gets accommodated. And I just think it is, they have done such a fantastic job at incorporating, and Chris and Jane have great comments, and the staff, and Megan, and Brian, and all these guys that come up with these things. It is a really fantastic project, in my opinion, where it is for the amount of work that has been put into it. I think it's going to be a really, really exceptional, extraordinary place. And the last comment is all the, the video that's incorporated into this. And the, the thing you just did, this fly-through, you kind of see there's those squares, but there will be a whole wall of video that technology is just going to be wired throughout this place, that is really going to make it a very, very special place for at least this government to call home. That's it. Jane, you got anything?
Go ahead.
No, I, I think it's fantastic. One of the questions are, what are your thoughts about to get public input in this if it, if it doesn't go to Planning and Zoning or whatever? What are the thoughts to get, I mean, this is the citizens' building, right? This is the, what are, what are you thinking about that?
And that was why I pointed out the fact that it does not go to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And that's one of the reasons why I included that question at the end, to see what council's desire was for a public process, if any, a more formal process. Step one was presenting where we are currently at this public forum, getting council's feedback, and also feedback on what the process might hold moving forward.
So, is there a plan to do that or thought to do that?
That's what we need to talk about.
Okay.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
I mean, I think it's, it's fantastic. Functionally, it seems to make a lot of sense, and I, the, 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 the glass, the transparency, if you will, is, is fantastic. I think, I think it'd be wonderful to figure out a way to be sure that we've got-
Is it at the place now, Sharon and Dave, where if anything was going to be changed? Or, you know, you, you could start breaking ground and then have feedback, and that wouldn't be very, you know, very meaningful feedback. Is this the place where feedback from the public would be warranted now? Because, I mean, we have a pretty short timeframe here. So, if there are going to be some kind of an open house or something, then?
Sure. Have an open house, town meeting, whatever you like to call it. I, the one thing that we'd like to do, as Sharon made reference to, is, is to take the, the video and get the colors more of what they would really be. When we do it in black and white, it's pretty flat. So, we thought, well, let's, we got to put some, some kind of color in there to give it depth. And I would like to get that more to what it really would be. So, somebody wouldn't ask, well, why is that a gray wall? You know, so, we want, I would like to do that much, but otherwise, I think the package is pretty much ready to go for town.
What do you think, taking it to the Planning Commission for an informal review?
Oh, yeah.
Just to garner feedback and publicize that and invite the public to come to that informal review?
Or, or some way to get the public. I mean, this is their building, right?
Agreed, yeah.
If there was, if there was an opportunity to say, we're going to have spaces here and engage, some, whether it's a town hall, whether it's a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning and that, I don't know the right way to do it. I, I think it'd just be a fantastic opportunity to, to-
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
Gather that feedback.
I think, I think that feedback is really important, so.
I think the feedback's important. I, I think we should do it at, not to, I'm not minimizing P&amp;Z. If people see P&amp;Z, they're going to think, well, there's more reviews coming, you know?
Yeah, maybe.
I think this needs to be city council. This is the plan. Come tell us what you think.
I like it.
And the city of Dublin-
I like it.
You know, hosts this thing at the library or even at the, I like Quad Five Building, but that is not catching on.
Quad Five, Four Five.
The Four Fives Building, Quad Five Building, whatever it is.
Why don't you, why don't you have an open house at, well, I'm going to suggest at the building, the 5555, although, you know, the building you would have it in isn't this, but it's next door. There is enough open space. You could, you could do that. I don't know if that gets in the way with the renovation of, of the existing, though, because we really got to move out on that if we're going to get out of here in time to get out of the way of the 5800 building. So, I don't know if that's something you could-
We would need to time it before-
tee up rapidly, or you could do it in this room, actually, if you can't do it over there.
We could. If we, if we would like to hold it at the Quad Five, as we affectionately refer to it. The timing would need to be such that that happens before mid-December, when construction actually starts.
Can you be ready to do something like that before mid-December?
Oh, we can do it pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
I think it's a great idea because it's going to point the place out to people. They're going to be able to come in and walk around and look at it. And once you do that, you have now set the flag.
Yep.
This is it. This is your new government building. And if, and there's plenty of space. There's nothing in there. It's just open space.
And that would be very helpful to the design team. And just for your awareness, the timing of the presentation this evening was such that it was a few weeks in advance of us returning to council to present the resolution for the first contract with Rusili for the renovations. But also, we just received these renderings and the fly-through just a couple of weeks ago. So, the timing actually worked out perfectly. So, as you heard Dave say, they would like a little more time to refine them before having that type of public meeting. But I would think we could make something happen before that critical date of mid-December.
I think so.
Could we also publicize, could we put this on the website?
Yes, I was going to mention that we plan on putting everything that we showed this evening-
That'd be great. Yeah, I think-
That'd be great. Yeah, I think that would give people the opportunity to send in email comments for people who might not want to come. And, and one of the things that I want to bring up that I know that we all talked about, and I think it's important for us to counsel to hear, the, the lobby area, and of course we don't have finishes, and finishes we've talked about, too, which, which give a totally different appearance to all of this, but we, we frequently talked about the fact that City Hall, as formal as we want it to be, and as respectful as the space is, that the lobby and the gallery, and even the conference room, and especially the portico area over to the lawn, becomes the community's front room. It's a place for them to gather, and that transparency between the informal spaces of being able to gather with the people that lead you, and to then enter into a formal space, and yet having the glass in between, is that, is, I think speaks to that transparency of government that we're really looking for, that we, the hope is, especially with the kitchenette there, that people will come and find this to be a comfortable place to be and have conversation, you know, with their leaders. So with, with elected officials and, and administration and that sort of thing. So when we do put it on the website, I think some of the principles that we are trying to put into the building need to be mentioned, so that they understand that it's more than just a drawing. It's really thoughtful about how this City Hall relates to our community. I think it's really important that that's mentioned, so...
So Dave and Sharon, I think you did a really good job tying the design elements together from the old and the new. I, I think you really worked hard on that. And then, you know, I, I know it's too early, but the pediment for entering the City Hall area, perfect for signage. I mean, I was just looking at that, that elevation.
Sorry, what location?
The pedo, the pediment above the entryway.
Oh, okay.
Look at that thing. It is just perfect for signage to make it clear where you're going to visit. And, you know, so you're not going to go to the left, you're going to go in there for City Hall business. So, and the vestibule idea, gathering space is really good. You guys put that in, that's been very successful with a lot of churches, you know, and probably will work well with government, so, good job.
Go to St. John of Arc on Christmas Eve. Everything is used. Every room is used.
Yeah. So no, it's just, you know, I think you guys put together a good design. Thank you.
Christina, anything? Good? Well, I, go ahead, sure, sure. Go ahead.
I want to make three points. And we talked about, this has been an interactive process over a while. The very first meeting we started with, that we had, that we looked, had something to look at, we actually presented either six or seven different options where the building would go. Understanding would always be connected in some manner, remember? And that, that, by this group, this conversation, we took that six options and narrowed it to three. And we took the three and narrowed it to this one. So it was, it went through a definite process. Talking about the signage for the building, here's lighting signage. On, on the north and south faces, on the columns and the cupola, we were going to do the colored lighting. So if it's, it needs to be green, or it needs to be red, or whatever, those columns will be lit up with that kind of lights. And then, let's show the floor plan of the, of the Quad Five Building, for that first floor. I just want to point something out in regard to the technology. So you see where the stair, the L-shaped stair is?
Mm-hmm.
That's the main lobby. You come in from the north, from the top of the drawing. To your right, that long blank wall, that will be a video wall. So again, it's the whole same kind of thing that you'll see in the council Galleria, where it's branding information, it's a video of some project, whatever it might be. So again, heavy use of technology.
There, and Chris and I, since I know we talked to you about this, we saw this on our trip, there was this museum that had this giant book. I mean, it was a huge book, like on a podium almost, and you walked up and just with your hand went like that, and the video page turned of the book. It was absolutely fascinating. It was so cool. If we can put something like that in there, it would be...
Where's the...
Figure that out, Dave.
Big book.
Yeah, figure that out. Very cool.
Well, I can turn it in on an hourly rate and turn the page.
Well, you know, I didn't think, I thought that that building, the original building, was a pretty special building. I thought it was going to be very difficult to either, to keep up with it, let alone outdo it with an addition, but I think you have actually outdone it.
I appreciate that.
Fantastic job.
And way to save the landscape. That's a really nice feature, the pond, the, in the back. Yeah, saving that is a great idea.
So you can...
We've actually had a couple of meetings on landscaping, as well as the parking, so we're very appreciative of what's been, the discussions that we've had. Our civil engineer, EMHNT, has met with landscaping, we've all met on the parking issues. We've even extended the bike path that comes from the police station over to this building and connects into the bike path that's there, so there's even a continuation of bike path.
Great. So great. You'll work with staff, and the next thing we'll hear is a date sometime in December where we're going to unveil everything. Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Moving on to short-term rentals update. Jennifer?
Good evening, council members. The Community Development Committee reviewed options for potentially regulating short-term rentals at its eighth August 20th meeting. The committee directed staff to develop a registration requirement that would apply to short-term rentals that were rented for more than 14 nights per calendar year. The purpose of registration would be to identify property used for their, for this purpose on a regular basis, and to create a more systematic way to document and understand their community impact. Since then, council members and staff have received additional concerns from residents regarding short-term rentals in neighborhoods. Due to the developments since the committee meeting, staff would like to seek council's direction as to how to proceed. Staff recommends that council refer the matter to the Community Development Committee to reexamine the issue, to determine whether regulation beyond registration, up to and including an outright prohibition on short-term rentals after a certain amount of nights, is necessary or advisable in light of recent developments. Additionally, recently, multiple residents have inquired as to whether long-term rentals can be regulated in any way, and there are options for registering such long-term rentals. Staff would recommend that the committee also consider adding this topic to its examination of short-term rentals. There's currently a Community Development Committee meeting scheduled for November 6th, and that could potentially be a time to review the matter in more detail.
Okay with that, John?
That's good.
I make a motion that we refer the short-term rental issue to the Community Development Committee.
I'll second.
Jenny?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Groom?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Did you have something, Jane?
No, I think Warren Fishman wanted to speak about this. He's in the, I know he didn't sign up, but...
Warren, did you sign in?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
You sure?
Oh, I didn't know. I thought you might want to, you, I, I knew you were here for this. Did you want to?
If you were here to say something, Warren?
Yeah, go ahead.
Come up and say something. We'll listen to you.
Briefly, just...
But it, it, I've been, I have, it's been brought, brought to my attention in the last
few months that we're getting a lot of Airbnbs in subdivisions, like Mirfield and Hemingway and places like that, that are residential developments. I've spent 40 years of my life making sure that zoning is correct where it is, and I, and, and we've had quite a few upset, I, I still get calls, and I, I've gotten quite a few calls from my neighbors in Mirfield, and a couple of, from some other subdivisions, and I think it's on those sites, too, they're talking about it, what's up next door, whatever. And, and I know in my court, we have seven houses, and, and right in our court, we have seven houses. We have two that are full-time Airbnbs now. They, they, we have two brothers that bought two houses, one's moved out, and every week we've got, we had, I counted six cars in his driveway all week last week. And this morning was kind of interesting, whatever they were doing in there, they had a U-Haul truck, and they were hauling boxes out of there in big bags. And, and maybe they're working on a campaign, or who knows what, but, but it's becoming like a commercial area. There's actually a third house, which is the father, that's one block away, and it's also being used on a full-time basis. He goes to Florida in the winter, and it's rented every week. I know Chris had that experience in her neighborhood many years ago, but this is even worse. During the, not this last...
Because you live there. Because you live there. It's bad.
Well, that's true, but you lived there then. We, we were concerned when you lived, where it was next to you. But, but we also, it's, it's worse now because Airbnbs are much more popular now, and, and this is filled every, these are filled every week. I noticed new cars pulled up this morning to both those houses. But, and, and as I said, we're getting a lot of concern, neighbors. The irritating thing about it is that there are strangers running around your court all the time. During the Ohio State football game, not this last one, but the one before, there must have been 25 people coming in and out of our court. The interesting thing was, what you didn't have then is Ubers. We have Ubers coming in and out all hours of the night, people standing in my neighbor's driveway, Ubers picking them up, taking them back, and so on. So it, it really looks like a commercial zoning. And I, I wouldn't mind it in a commercial area. The other thing, of course, we're not, they're not paying, I'm sure they're not paying the bed tax, and, and so on. If you're interested, just look on the Ohio, if you already haven't, and you'll, you'll see.
I think that's why we're sending it back to committee. I mean, this was something I advocated before and, and wasn't successful in. And, you know, fortunately, we've heard from a number of residents that are having experiences similar to yours, and, you know, it, it seems that there may be more support in terms of what is it that we're going to do about these, because it is extremely disruptive in a residential neighborhood. And, you know, I, I recall when my kids were little, you know, you'd have people in your neighborhood, and you didn't know who, you know, we bought at the end of a cul-de-sac because we wanted to be, wanted to know our neighbors and be at the end of a cul-de-sac, and all of a sudden, it wasn't. And so, you know, this is exactly why we're referring it back to the Community Development Committee in hopes that there'll be more support for, you know, regulation of these.
Yeah, no, big problem is really for sports teams to come bring 14 or 20 people into a house, which saves a lot of money, circumnavigates our hotels, because, you know, they're going to go around the bed tax, and, you know, as far as helping the community, so. And that's what's really starting to happen, because they all bring their sleeping bags and arrive, the sports team, they rent a house, it's ungodly, you know, reasonable all of a sudden to move into another community and play sports. So I don't think you really need that kind of traffic in your residential neighborhood, along with all the other things you mentioned.
Actually, on my court, I'm probably the least bothered, because I don't have any kids. Now, I got a call a couple of weeks ago from a lady on tour, Woodley, which is the court behind ours, and there's a bike path that runs there. And she said she counted 16 people or something with beers running up and down the court, you know, after, after the Ohio State game. And, and she kept her kids, and she has little tiny kids, I guess, and she kept her kids inside. I, I would not be opposed, I don't think most of the neighbors would be, to having the two weeks or 14 days for the tournament, and if you trade houses with somebody, you know, I, I think that's fine. But I think as a, you know, every week thing, it's pretty tough. But I think, I, I think Arlington's had some success with the two-week limit. Am I correct there?
Arlington has actually banned all short terminals, but as we noted in our last memo, they're still popping up on Airbnb, so they prohibited them.
I guess you have to have enforcement, too, you know, so.
Yeah, and I met a lady whose neighboring house in Arlington wasn't Airbnb. And all the problems she was having with it, it was very interesting. Even though it's banned, seems that they still find it on the internet and they just go there.
All right, so John, you can put it on your agenda for the Community Development Committee on the 6th of November?
Yep.
Kathy, that's you and Chris, right? You three are on board.
Okay.
We're on it, Warren.
Thanks.
We're on it.
Okay.
We're on it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Staff comments, Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Community Development Committee, John, how about your facade?
Ah, yes, just want to report that the committee met, and 16 and 22 North High Street, we felt was going to be a great improvement to the town. And so the entire committee voted for that, and I guess the reasons might be that they're improving a, the circulation, adding a walkway, developing the building as a possible restaurant site in the future, build a back deck on it, or back patio, should I say, with a deck. And so we, we felt that, our, our motion really on this one is to accept the recommendations of the CDC on, on 1622 North High Street. It's, by the way, $15,000 for each phase of it.
I second that motion.
Vice Mayor Amros Groom?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And now, on 91 South High Street, staff and the committee recommended that not be passed. That was more or less what we felt was a improvement that every landowner should maintain their, their building as far as painting it and its upkeep, so that one was not approved.
Any comment from, anyone? So it is a motion, so that was a motion to accept the recommendation and to deny the request?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jenny?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Groom?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
P and Z, Jane? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Admin, Chris?
We're looking for a schedule for our CSAC interviews, so we'll keep trudging away. I think there was a, a date circulated today, you should see an email on that tomorrow.
Thank you. Finance, Mike is not here. Kathy or Christina?
We don't have anything.
Nothing to talk about? Public Services Committee, Christina?
Not this time.
Coda, Kathy?
Nope, thanks.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Not this time.
Morpsy, Chris?
Nothing.
UC Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nope, thanks.
Northwest 33 Corridor Group, Kathy?
The only thing, I'll just, we had a meeting last, this was Friday, and the, and the meeting was simply just to get a catch-up on community updates, what was going on around, around us. Marysville is going forward with a new water plant on Raymond Road. It would be large enough for Marysville and the 33 Corridor in Union County. It doubles their capacity of two, eight million gallons a day. It's a $60 million project, so they have that on the board. They, they mentioned that they have 1,000 apartments coming in online in the Texas Roadhouse. Jerome Township has a new zoning officer, and Mill Creek is meeting for, with PUCO Symposium about looking at ways to close the gas gaps, the utilities for three counties of Champaign, Logan, and Union. That's pretty much, I think, I think that's all that we have that's going on there.
Thank you, Jane. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Two weeks ago, the City of Dublin, with the Dublin Arts Council, hosted the Arts and Wellness Symposium, which was really a lot of fun. and Wellness Symposium, which was really a lot of fun. There was a lot of learning, they did, you know, as usual, the staff really worked hard, putting up all the tents, getting in the speakers, it was really enjoyable. I think Jane could comment on this. What do you think, Jane?
I learned a lot about tapping. It was actually wonderful to see people interacting and using art in wellness together. I saw some amazing artists there, and I think that the, I think that the efforts of the Arts Council to do that, to bring wellness into that space and interactively involve people, is going to be a home run for them.
It's a beautiful day again, too. That's it.
Thanks, John. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
My friends from Washington Township, Mr. Richter, Chief, you got anything? Proud and happy? All is good? Dublin Bridges, Jane?
Just quickly, Dublin Bridges collected over 300 costumes for Halloween to be administered, to be sent out to all the schools, so that there will not be a child who will not be dressed up this Halloween, if they come to school and they don't know about Halloween. They have a few goals in 2019, and I'll pass this out in case there's anybody watching, but they are looking for six kindness council members. These are people that might give $1,000 donation in a year's time that would go to the overhead of Dublin Bridges. Almost everything in Dublin Bridges goes right to the person, but administrative needs are there, and it would be wonderful if we have six people in this community that might think about doing that, and...
How could they reach out if they wanted to be that?
All they would have to do is contact Sarah or Jill through the website.
Got it.
They can do that. And they're, Dublin Bridges has now moved into Alabama. We have six Dublin Bridges being formed in Alabama, and this has all started in Westerville, Ohio, so it's wonderful.
All right. Let's just stay right there with you. Roundtable.
I don't have very much, but I know that when we, that one thing I wanted to bring up, when it comes to, first of all, happy birthday, Jennifer. It's her birthday today.
You have two more hours left. Enjoy them.
Two more hours, so much for celebrating tonight.
Knock yourself out.
So, when you go home and you start working on the property maintenance code that we're asking you to do...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. I want to bring up the fact that, we haven't addressed this, but as I was traveling, I noticed billboards, and I can't stand billboards, and I told my husband how they just mess up the landscape. We have our own billboards here, and they are these commercial, huge signs that are on a couple of four-by-four posts that never come down. They are our own commercial billboards, and I really would like to see them go away, or be restricted to certain times and that sort of thing. I don't know where they, we are so, we are so sign-conscious, but you can go almost anywhere in the city, and in every two, one to two blocks, you see these things. So, there you are. Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
The gift, the Thanksgiving.
I can't wait to dive right in. We have been discussing this with the consultant on the sign code, and we are preparing a draft for your consideration. We are limited in some of the things we can do with regard to the type of sign because of a Supreme Court case, the Reed versus City of Gilbert case that we've discussed before. It's put significant limitations on us, differentiating between different signs, and there was actually a case that came out specifically related to on-premises versus off-premises signs, which are billboards. So we can look at that, and we're being as aggressive as we possibly can, but you'll have a full code rewrite in the near term.
I appreciate that. Just really quickly, what would make the difference between a residential for-sale sign that's this small and a commercial lease sign that's huge? Why couldn't someone put that sign in the front yard for the sale of their house? Could they?
We, we do have more latitude with regard to commercial development, because there are less, less kind of First Amendment protections for that. Typically, any sign that, with the Reed case, any sign that you have to determine what it is by the type of sign that you're advertising. So if it is for sale, for lease, we, the issue at the center of Reed was some of the community activity signs, directional signs, do we need to really distinguish between those, or can we say every building can have this size sign, and it can say whatever it wants?
Okay.
And so, it's more regulating, putting limitations. We can't put limitations on the size and location, we can always do that. We just have to craft it, make sure that it's, you know, kind of, we can move it from building to building, and it makes sense for...
And length of time that it stays up. They never come down.
Yes.
I totally agree with you. There is, I have an office in Metro Place, and there's, it's about as big as that thing, and it's on four-by-fours, and it's been there since before we leased, and it just gives a bad feeling when you pull in. It feels like there's a vacancy, and there's like, there's a fire sale going on, and that's not what I want my clients pulling into. And I don't know what, and in today's world of information, if you are renting places because people drove past your building and saw your giant sign, you aren't marketing very well. I can't imagine those things are very effective, but I totally agree with you, Jane. Kathy?
I agree with that, too. I just want to, just one thing I wanted to say, thank you to Megan and Matt and team. I saw the update on the sidewalk repair and replace in the notes. Something like 423 locations were done this year, and only seven trees were removed in that process. I'm still going for zero, right? But that is a substantial improvement, and we know just how important are those street trees are and how much they mean to all of us, so I know there's been a lot of work. And I also know that there's been a lot of work in making sure that the residents are involved in the process. Still some things to work out, but I saw that the notification timeline and the material that are going to go out to residents are being updated, and I sincerely appreciate that, because it's wonderful that we're repairing the sidewalks and we know how important that is. So I know that's a huge step forward, and I appreciate all that work, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Kathy. John?
My birthday present to you. Jennifer is not to say anything, so you can go home and celebrate the last two hours of your birthday.
All right. Thank you, John. Christina?
Very quickly, we had our first sort of full complete count committee with regard to the census. We formed a bunch of subcommittees, four or five of them, and we are working on establishing a meeting schedule going into the spring, at which point we will hit the ground running with the census, and that's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Christine. Chris?
I'd like to thank the Chamber and the Rotary for holding candidate forums and doing, making their best attempts to educate the public, so thank them, I thank them for that. I had the opportunity to welcome at the Kung Fu Tai Chi Day, and it was a really fantastic event down at Souda Park, and it was extremely well-attended, and it was a beautiful day. It was the same day as the HDBA Fall Fest, so I was late on my arrival there, but congratulations to the HDBA for scheduling their Fall Fest on such a beautiful day. They had, certainly had a lot of people there. I wanted to thank the staff for holding a really good OSU Shire Rings Drive Relocation Public Meeting. It was extremely well-attended, and I think that we were present, we were represented very well there. I have two things of items that residents have brought up to me. One, as we approach Memorial Day about banners in our community with the service members that call Dublin home, either past or present, and so I would like us to look at what it might be. I know we put the banners up with the little flags on them, but I've seen other communities, and it's been brought to my attention about people putting banners up of service people that maybe some of them didn't come home, or they're actively serving, and I think